Much concern for our education system. And I hope it's going to be really beneficial. And that's what we're here to try to represent and help them. We are going to have the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
And I would like for those of you that believe in a higher being, please pray for all this situation that's going on tonight and across our world. You may be seated.
Amen.
The next item of is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay. You're not even second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Dr. Austin, is this a time when we're going to have the public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, we'll have a public comment. We've got a timer. Ms. Kristin Wells will be timing. You've got five minutes. And please be calm and respectful, no matter what, how you feel, and let us know. And we will call the time. If you don't want all five minutes, then that's okay too. I know I've got some brave souls. I'm at the top two. Okay, go ahead. Would you please come to the podium? And please state your name.
Yes. My name's LaWanna Baumgartner. I'm a respiratory therapist, 27 odd years. Have a 12-year-old that's going into the sixth grade. My question is, with this being an aerosol, transmitted by aerosol, how are we going to, I mean, even as, you can't, there's no way you can keep, I want you to know, I mean, how are your plans to keep the children separated? And are they going to wear masks? I mean, we need to know the plans of how it's laid out, what your plans are to keep them apart, how the PE is going to go, how they're going to, when they change classes, to keep their distance. And another thing is the financing for the masks and the hand sanitizing and all the cleaning products that the county's going to have to have for the school system.
I hope that some of those questions will be answered later on. Dr. Austin, are you going to have a presentation here in a little bit?
I had not claimed on it, but I'll be glad to address any questions I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next up. Come on, be brave. You have to be at the top two. We all have our children. We've got to work this out.
We need to know a plan here.
Okay.
We don't know what our tax question is.
I've got a couple of questions. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Can I come to the podium?
Oh, really?
Okay. Can y'all hear me?
Hey.
Do you want me to come to the podium?
Please do.
Yes.
Okay. So, my name's Hannah Garrett. I am a pharmacist and I practice in Kingsport, but I live in this area. Both my children are 10, public school here in the area. So I have a few questions. I'm going to ask you all my questions and then I'm going to go sit down and you all can answer them the best you can. Because I realize you all don't have all the answers, but I'm hoping that by answering these questions, you can see some of our concerns. Maybe if you don't have the answer, maybe you can help later on to get the answers. So, number one, Chromebooks. And I'm concerned because our school system doesn't always have the best record of being ahead of the game, no offense, but I'm concerned that when we do go to school, that my kids are not going to have the supplies and things that they need. I realize all the school systems are trying to order Chromebooks and things like that. So my question is, is if my kids are going to have to do some online learning, am I going to have the supplies that I need to do that? We live in a rural area. I'm very fortunate. Me and my husband both work. We try to supply our kids with what they need, but my internet's not the best, even where I live in a new home within the last 10 years, and I'm concerned about that. So I'd like to know if the Chromebooks have been ordered, if we're going to have those the first week of school, and if we're not going to have those, when are those going to be here? Second question. Sorry, hold on. It's my, I, I like many of these folks in here or people that are in our school system have had vacations planned and we've had to reschedule and things like that. My question for you is, is that for us personally, we've rescheduled our vacation to October. We're probably still not going to go, but my question for you guys is that if you have faculty or families that do go to what we consider hotspots, are you going to allow them to come back into the classroom or are you going to require them to quarantine for their 14 days? I do know that the state has certain areas that they do recommend with their employers to quarantine. If you've been there, I know Air State Department, or Air State Department right now, if you go to Florida, they're requiring state employees to quarantine for 14 days. So my question is, is, you know, everybody's allowed, it's a free country, you're allowed to do what you want to do, but they need to, we need to know that ahead of time so that we can make arrangements. And I want to know that, and kind of want to know that for myself, if I, you know, I love my teachers, but if I have a teacher that goes, I want to feel comfortable enough to know what's expected and what's expected of me if I go out of town. Third question. I did read your all's plan. I appreciate you all putting it together. I think, I know that you all worked hard. I've got friends and family that work in the school system or have, and I appreciate that. One of the things that stuck out to me is when you group kids together and do Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, I kind of thought that that was more germ spreading than not. I didn't know if maybe to mention that, to me as a parent, it maybe sounds to group the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that way you wouldn't be rotating so much germs in one cycle and gives the janitors time to clean. That sort of stuck out to me. That was just something I saw. Fourth thing, will meals still be provided to the kids like when they're not in school? And if we do, you know, there's certain scenarios out. I fortunately have taken advantage of the free meals on occasion. My parents keep my kids and I thank the cafeteria workers and the people who put that together, because that's been very beneficial. We've used that. My mom enjoys being able to use that because it helps with the kids. She doesn't have to necessarily cook every single day. So I just wondered like what the meal plan was, if the kids were doing remote learning and we're doing it, doing it like that. I'm sorry for so many questions, guys. The other question I had is, it was more like with destruction in classroom. Me and my husband were planning on sending their children, but if you have kids in the classroom that come and they want to be in the classroom and they decide to do remote learning for a week and then they decide to come back for a week, how's that going to be handled? Like, I mean, I know that we're allowed to make those choices, but is it going to be kind of like a hot potato? You can come, you can not come, you know, what line is going to be drawn on that? Two others, I'm sorry. So.
20 seconds.
Okay, sorry. I'll talk real fast. Are notifications going to be sent out to the parents and to the families? You know, God forbid if we did have a case or something like that, and are we going to be told? Are we going to have that communication? And thirdly, which is maybe way ahead of ourselves, has any information from about SOLs been said to this coming year? And that's it. Thank you for your time and I'm sorry for several questions.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
I would like to suggest something to the board. I'm not trying to dictate how this goes by any means, but quick question. We don't do question-answer stuff. We don't want to get into a politic fight, but how many people actually do not in OT know what the school plan is? Please raise your hand. So there's several here that don't. It's been online. We've had community meeting or community meetings. We've done surveys and I know I have a hard time keeping up myself sometimes, but can I suggest that Dr. Austin give a quick plan review just to catch everybody up? We'll try to answer some of those questions as we go maybe. But, and two, I want to make mention, the board's job is to task the superintendent and everybody that works here to come up with a plan based on governor's guidelines. And I'll say this before we get started, that task is not easy. 136 pages of demands from Governor Northam, not demands, but recommendations, I'll say it that way, that they have to work around to put a plan together to educate our kids in Lee County. That's how it comes about now. It's up to us five to vote again, vote it down, make changes that we need. But as far as the overview of the plan, if nobody has a problem with it, I'd like for Dr. Austin to give an overview there and we'll answer some questions that she asked. I don't care if it's a question.
That's what I was going to say. I'd like those questions to be briefed if that's not.
Yeah, I'm certainly okay.
All good questions.
Yes.
Dr. Austin.
All right. So I'll answer some questions, but I'll also hit the hot spots of the plan that we presented last Thursday. The hot spots of the plan and the whole thing is available online. And if you'd like a copy, we could probably get you one before you leave tonight. So if you're interested in a copy, we'll be glad to provide that. Just let me know before you leave. Give us 10 minutes and we'll get you a copy. The 30,000-foot view of it is what we've recommended to the school board.
Come over here and sit here.
Do I need a mic?
No.
I grab that one. If that's easier, that way I'm not using the same mic you all.
What's that?
I can choose that mic.
Okay. Do that. I want everybody back there to be able to hear me.
Can everybody hear me? Or is it better with a mic? How about now? Okay. So the 30,000-foot view of the plan, what I said earlier, is if you would like a copy, we'll be glad to provide you one. See me after the meeting. It'll take me 10 minutes to get us copies, but we'll be glad to provide that to you. It's available online. What we proposed to the school board, Mr. Kidwell alluded to, we received 136 pages of guidance from the Department of Education. We've got guidance from the Virginia Department of Health, from the American Association of Pediatrics, from the Department of Labor, Virginia Department of Labor and Industry. We have resources more than what I can really put into words. So what we did is we pared that down and made it appropriate for Lee County and presented what we feel like is the best opportunities for our students. Now, is it perfect? Absolutely not. But there is not anything that we're doing that's perfect at this point. We have teachers who are wanting to teach. We have students who are wanting to learn and we're just trying to get them in the same space as safely as we possibly can with public health being our first focus. I'm a very child-centered educator and that's where I drill down to is what can we do to serve children? And our teachers are amazing at what they do, you know, and getting them in front of these students is the best thing we can do. And Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, I'm behind you. But that being said, what we proposed to the school board last Thursday, and is I think in the paper this week, certainly appreciate our coverage from both the television as well as coverage from Pow Valley News, Kingsport Times News. We have some great media friends that represent what we do extremely well. 30,000-foot view as we recommended to the board that Monday through Thursday, that our kindergarten pre-K, Head Start included, through seventh grade, attend every day. What we have seen, we shared a bunch of survey results, 60% of our community have said they're interested in students attending somehow. So that means 40% are interested in either a hybrid every other day or possibly even some kind of remote learning. So we were looking at capacity within each building. The American Association of Pediatrics as well as the Virginia Department of Health have said if a student is three feet apart, then we can help mitigate or lessen the likelihood that this is spread. Six feet is CDC guidelines, but those have modified some, but again, three feet is what they have said for students. So what we have proposed is Monday through Thursday, K7, because those students we feel like really benefit from in-person instruction. The reason we did Monday through Thursday is because based on polling numbers that we received back from parents as well as the community, the vast majority of individuals chose a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday option, and that was based on, again, polling numbers with a Friday being remote learning. Everybody would learn remotely. So that's K7 for the high schools. What we proposed is Monday, Wednesday, one group, Tuesday, Thursday, another group, and Friday be remote learning. What we have in the plan as well as an action item for the school board tonight, in our budget from some CARES money, it's federal stimulus money that was provided to address this issue, we're proposing providing a Chromebook or a tablet, a Chromebook for grades two through 12 or a tablet device for Head Start through first grade. So that's what we're proposing. We polled, the community gained an 83% response rate on internet access. So we are working with the Board of Supervisors on how to address that. We've got a litany of options in that. The Board of Supervisors has offered fire halls, voting precincts, that we can actually run our network to those locations. Students can work from home on a Chromebook. It's uploaded on the Chromebook, then all they've got to do is connect to our network and their work then is synchronized and that counts as attendance. So parents would have to go to that location. Or the other thing that we've also gotten our proposal is putting access points on each one of our buses and we run bus routes two hours later than usual and students can go out to the bus stop, connect to that internet access and then upload or download whatever assignments they have. Is that ideal? Absolutely not. But is it the best that we can do at this point? Yes, that's what we are, is administration proposing to the school board. The other thing that we had in there is career and technical is next to impossible to do on a Chromebook, so we proposed to the board allowing them to attend in person. As long as we can maintain social distancing, we would provide transportation from Thomas Walker, Lee High, of course, is a short trip, but we would provide transportation for those classes, whether it's carpentry, welding, whatever class it is. Those students, if we can keep social distancing and can accommodate it, we'll have those classes every day. So the students that are doing Monday, Wednesday on the academic side could attend a career and technical class. Now, that's just at the Career Center and then they could attend their academics on Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. Our concern, the reason we suggested that staggered schedule is because transportation last year was approximately 2,400 students as him and he rode our bus out of 3,200. We proposed that the split schedule would help with the high school, the capacity of transportation, also the capacity of our buildings. Between Lee High Campus and Career Tech Center, if everybody's here, we have almost 1,000 people on campus. So by the time you look at those just sheer numbers, it's next to impossible to get social distancing. So that's why we proposed the every other day. Now, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday groups, we put those options out in a survey and again, the, I think it was a third of respondents chose the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday option. We care about children deeply, how we go about serving them. Frankly, we want to serve the community. So we need to make sure that when we put out surveys, I promise you, we listen to. But the thing about it is if you were in that third, the next, I think it was a third chose that, and I think it was like 27, 28% chose the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday option. So those are very close polling numbers if you're looking at that. So I think that's pretty much hit the hot spots of the presentation. To answer your question about gym class, what we've got in there is consistent with guidelines from both the Department of Education and Department of Health. 10 feet is what we would have in gym class. K7 students would stay in their cohort, whatever class they're in. Those students would stay in that class and teachers would rotate to lessen the likelihood of transferring this between classes. Masks, we are requesting staff, if they're going to be within six feet, we're expecting. That's what's proposed. If you are a staff member and you're going to be within six feet of a student, you need to wear a mask, face covering technically. Students are going to be encouraged to wear one during the day if they're going to be closer than three feet to each other. And if you are riding a bus, we're going to expect students to ride over to wear a mask, to wear a face covering to lessen the likelihood of this being transferred. Distance, I think I covered that, three feet, six feet, 10 feet. The cost, that's something we're just going to have to cover in a budget. It's the cost of serving. We have some federal money that we can balance that back against, but we're just going to have to be frugal with how we spend our money. Addressing the next ladies' questions. Chromebooks, we plan again to supply those to grades two through 12. As far as supplies, we will address whatever needs. As far as making sure internet access, we need your help. We need your help with letting us know what kind of internet you have and how we can work with the Board of Supervisors to possibly get it to your house. There's some state money, federal money, all kinds of opportunities, but we need to make sure that we know your need. So please, share with your neighbors, share with anybody you know. Let us know what you need and we're going to work to figure it out. Now, will we have that done in three weeks? Probably not. But are we going to work to a solution? Absolutely. Hotspots. The Health Department at this point has not given us a list of hotspots that they consider, like Florida, for example. Now, they have, the Health Department says that if certain staff go to certain areas, then yes, they have to self-quarantine, but they have not been willing to put that in print for local government use. We've been pressing for that, but I'm not an expert in that. I don't know how to look at a website and CNN says this is a hotspot. Does that carry credence or not? So we've been looking for guidance and have not received that to this point. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I mentioned that about germs. Our staff does a good job of cleaning. We have provided, three years ago, we purchased what are called hydrostatic machines that they actually will stick to surfaces and clean. We actually wipe surfaces. We've trained our staff how to do that. So they know how to do that and that's something that we will staff. If we have to hire extra custodians or we have to work extra shifts or we have to stagger shifts, we're going to do that. I trust our principals to do what needs to be done and also our teachers to make sure that rooms are clean, to make sure that our students are safe. Meals when not at school. If somebody is doing remote learning, we've coordinated with our cafeteria staff that if we know who's coming to pick them up, we will do like what we've done this summer and provide drive-through service for remote learners. And then in person, we will send home on Thursdays, meals for Friday. So we've got a plan for that. The attendance, hot potato? We've had a debate administratively and even having conversations with a number of teachers, that attendance is just going to be interesting. I mean, because there may be a family, you know, two weeks ago with nine positive cases in Lee County, may have said, I'm sending my child four days a week or whatever the board adopts. I'm sending them as often as I can. Two weeks later with 26 cases in Lee County, those parents may make a different decision. So that's where we have not put in the document that you have to commit to four weeks or six weeks or nine weeks. We want you to adapt to your family and your situation. And that's what we've proposed to the board. Will it make it tough on our students? Probably more so on our teachers. But our teachers are going to have to adjust to in-person instruction as well as remote instruction and have those lessons ready every day for every child to be as equitable as we can. Notification to families if a positive result happens? Absolutely. Now, can we tell you who it is? No. HIPAA applies, which is the Federal Protection Act for your health record. You may get a phone call, and I've had interesting discussions with the Health Department for the last four months, but you may get a phone call from the Health Department saying somebody that you have come in contact with within the last 48 hours has tested positive for the COVID-19 virus. You need to self-quarantine for 14 days. Of course, everybody wants to know who? Who is it? And they can say, we can't disclose that. If you test positive, you have the option of disclosing your identity. You choose not to, then you have to disclose who you have had contact with in the last 48 hours and then the Health Department reaches out to those individuals to say, you are possibly positive, you need to stay home for 14 days. So will we put out a notice that there's a positive case at a school? Yes. Will we be able to disclose who it is? No. Will we work with the Health Department to make sure that, is it a class that we have to self-quarantine or do we lose the whole school? Do we need to look at a whole division shutdown? What we have been advised from the Health Department is it very well may be that just that student's bus and that student's class, if they're a second grader, third grader and they're cohorted, which means they stay with their entire class, they don't transition in halls, we feed them lunch and breakfast in the classroom, we work with our teachers on how that's going to work, we'll figure that out. But the bottom line to it is, it depends. It depends on the situation as to how we will respond, but I promise you and assure you, we will communicate. And I think I've answered, oh, SOLs. We don't know at this point. State Board of Education hasn't decided. General Assembly's meeting in the next couple of weeks to decide some of that. But do I anticipate some kind of testing? Yes. Do I know what that looks like? Absolutely not. I mean, I don't have an inkling at this point what SOLs will look like, what assessments will look like, but will we be tested at some point? Probably. But if you'd have said four months ago that we would be having this kind of meeting discussing how we're starting school, I would have said probably not. So we're just, we're in uncharted territories and the bottom line is we need your help. We need your patience, we need your understanding, and we need your communication. Let us know what you need and give us time to respond. And that's what we ask. Anything I missed?
If you don't mind, it's probably going to be rolled up, but VHSL update, what they have done today?
Virginia High School League put out three options today. If you pin me down, I'm not sure I can name them all. One of the options is that there's an abbreviated season and fall sports. I'm going to mess it up. There's three models. But fall sports basically wouldn't start until the spring. That possibly baseball could be played in the fall, football played in the spring. I can't remember the other option. But VHSL at this point does not look like football will be played in August, just FYI. They are voting on it on July 27th, which is a week from Monday, so we will not know about that until then. So more to come and of course, there's, a lot of things can change. This is one of those things where it changes by the day almost on guidance and recommendations. And of course, the governor could make an announcement on Friday and we go back to phase two and then we're all in remote learning. It's not going to matter. So it's, it is, it changes. I met with administration yesterday and we talked about balance, how to balance personally, professionally, and professionally, how do you balance all this? But the graphic that I showed was a sea turtle. You know, you've seen the sea turtles? Because ocean currents change frequently right now. I've heard this situation described as being fluid and it changes. VHSL, other guidance, so you know, please help us help you.
So there. Virtual learning opportunities and also virtual teaching opportunities that are available from day one?
From day one, parents may choose to just do remote learning. So you may choose for your child to stay home and learn by Chromebook and we're going to, we're looking at options of, would it help some students to have a DVD of their teacher? What we proposed in this is on Fridays, that teachers be available for at least three hours, if not six, to be able to communicate with their students by phone, by video call, by whatever device that we've got. So from a teaching standpoint, we're going to have some teachers, I anticipate. I anticipate that we will have some teachers who have serious concerns about either their own or their family's health and they may choose to telework. So your child may be in a class where the teacher teaches from home and we have a paraprofessional or a teacher assistant in the room to help with the instruction that the teacher provides. So we anticipate having some staff that are going to have either health challenges or health concerns, but they still want to serve children, but they just can't do it in person. So we're anticipating that.
Can you also address, so everybody knows, what we're planning to do to keep the distancing and to hopefully keep masks on children on school buses and to take their temperatures and all that?
As proposed, we're recommending adding a bus aid to every bus. And what that will be is, and this is where as parents, we need your help. If your child's sick and you may have allergies, you may have fever, if the child's got a fever, please don't send them to a bus stop. We need your help. Because what happens is when a child gets on a bus, much like you were screened coming in, we will screen them getting on a bus. If they've got a fever of 101, we're going to contact the parents and then hold that child at the bus stop. So that's where we need your help. As parents, if your child's sick, remote learn. And to the other parents' question of this is going to change day by day? Absolutely. I mean, it's going to change day by day, who attends, who doesn't, based on, you know, was little Johnny running around with his buddies at the bus stop and they're running a fever of 101, not because they're sick, but because they were being children. You know, that happens. So we're going to account for that, but we're going to recommend hiring a bus aid for every bus to help with that, to help seating, because as proposed, if one child per seat, unless they live in the same household, then we can have more than one in a seat with spacing than one in a seat with spacing throughout the bus. So you will not see buses packed. So beware of that as a taxpayer. You will not see buses with 40, 50 students on them. We're going to be at about half, if not a third, capacity on our buses, which means we may have more bus rides.
Last thing for me. Hannah asked a question about school meals. And did you mean like on Fridays, if schools closed on Friday, are they going to serve meals? Was that what your question was?
Just to make sure that, just to make sure that everybody has access and they need it.
So what's their plan in regard?
On Fridays, again, the remote learning, we're going to have meals available for pickup on Fridays as planned. It's going to be either the hot meal, or if parents say that they just want to take something home on Thursday afternoon and it's a box meal, now, of course, it won't be warm.
What if we're Phase 2, where you've got kids going two days a week, the kids that are going, you know, on days that they're not at school, are those kids going to have access to those meals?
Again, they would have to notify us. We will feed the ones that are there. The ones that are not, they're doing remote learning and parents want to pick them up, if they notify the cafeteria, notify the school, then yes, ma'am, we will do a drive-through service like what we've been doing for the remote learners. Sorry, I thought I, okay. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We will. This has been a tremendous program, a great service to the community, and we intend to continue it as long as we possibly can.
I would like to add one thing. I have talked to some parents that say that they want to homeschool. Please consider virtual learning, because that way, when you feel safe to go back to school, then you would be pretty much caught up with the rest of the class. If you do a homeschool, it would be hard for you to get back in with the regular students.
And we will provide supplies. We've already got on the list of things, flash drives, again DVDs, that we can send home, that students can watch on TVs. Of course, you can't play a DVD in a Chromebook, but we're going to work through. I anticipate out of 3,200 students, we're probably going to have 2,800 situations. So we were going to work diligently to try to serve you the best that we possibly can. Need our teachers to help. Need staff to work to keep buildings clean. And I know we will get that because we've got some great people that not only want to serve families, but just love children.
Dr. Austin?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ely, I might add on that well, is if a student is homeschooled, which means they are not enrolled in Lee County Public Schools, then they are not eligible to participate in sports, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you have a student that plays sports, then they really need to consider the remote learning. Because if you choose a homeschooling, which you're enrolled in another program and not in Lee County Public Schools, then you're not eligible to participate.
Okay, so virtual learners can participate in sports?
Yes.
Presently, yes, ma'am.
If they're enrolled in our school, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And doing a remote learning through our school, they're still enrolled here and eligible to participate. But if they choose to do a homeschool program, that's the, you know, through Penn Foster or Dr. Austin, you can elaborate on that.
For clarification, the difference between remote learning and virtual learning would be, you have a Lee County Public School issued device, you have contact with our teachers, you're on a roster somewhere. If you are homeschooling, then you have to file a report with us that says you're providing an education for your child. You have to provide your own tests, you have to provide your own instruction, but you have to provide us updates. There's no other accountability to us, other than you have to provide, have to provide reports as opposed to having access to our staff. So there's a difference in remote learning Yes, ma'am.
And usually goes around like 20 students. And why? Is that teacher going to have extra help in trying to keep these kids separated?
Would you please come to the podium and state your name and ask that question so we all can hear? Thank you.
I'm getting close to you.
My name is Evelyn Bloomer. I'm a registered nurse, have this about 20 year in the health field. And I have a granddaughter that's going to be in the first grade this year. She wants to go back to school. But when a teacher has like 20 kids to a classroom, how in the world is she going to keep those kids separated all during the day?
Good question.
I mean, that's one big concern.
You okay with me giving my interpretation?
Yes, please.
How I would answer that?
Thank you, Ms. Bloomer.
Did I lose the microphone? Ready, might go on. Can you hear me now? Yes. To answer the question about first grade, is if you have 20 students, we're anticipating, again, the percentage of those students are going to choose remote learning. So by the time you account for remote learning and student absences, that teacher may have 12 to 13 students. And what we've looked at in each one of our classrooms, even with six feet social distance, we can fit 10 to 12 students per classroom. So we anticipate that being the case. Now, first grader, you know, are you going to be able to keep them in a face covering all day? Absolutely not. "This is hot. I don't want to," you know. So we're going to work through something. But, you know, it's, we're not going to kick a student out of school for not wearing a face mask. We're going to call the parent and say, "Hey, listen, we need your help with Suzie or Johnny, that they're not wearing their face covering and it's a, it's a safety issue, public health issue for not only your child, but for others. So can you help us encourage your child to do that?" What we have planned at this point is something similar to these that are called NetGators, that we're going to get logos, each school's logo on them, so that that way, it's more attractive for a child to wear. You know, "I'm wearing something from my school." We'll provide those. So that's something that we're looking to provide, as well as the face covering similar to what you're wearing. But you and I both know that those are not the most comfortable thing, and children are probably not going to wear them. So, of course, they can use their own, or they can use the one we provide.
Okay, we need some more public comment. There's a lot of you here, and I feel sure that you want to talk. Don't be afraid. Come talk to us.
Is there still a plan for summer school?
What was that?
Is there still a plan for summer school? Yes, sir. And we're not, it's not typical summer school. We worked with our administrators back in May, early June, and what we're calling it is Jump Start. We put this out available to families. If there's 355 students signed up at this point between all 11 schools, including Career Tech. So we have provided that opportunity. And it's not just for students who have what we consider to be instructional gaps. It's also for students who want to get ahead. Or the reason we call it Jump Start is because it gives you four hours a day, starting Monday, Monday through Thursday, and then the next Monday through Thursday. Two weeks to kind of get back into routine, because students and families have not been doing this, including teachers, for four months. So that's what we call it, yes, sir. That's what we've got on the docket at this point.
I don't think I need a microphone, but...
Here's your mic.
I'm Crystal Ely, and I teach at the Career Center. I have two kids in the school system as well.
Give me a second.
Okay. I have one question, well, I have several questions, but this question is about, how are you going to determine what kids go what days? Is that going to be by alphabet? You know, is A through G going to go on Mondays and Wednesdays, and, you know, the rest go on Tuesdays and Thursdays? And if you do that, then what about the families that have kids, multiple kids with different last names? Are you going to go by households? Are households going to go on certain days? Or how's that going to work? My second concern is at the Career Center. My class, I teach Family Consumer Sciences, it's a lot different than the other Career Center classes, as far as shop and all that. And if you open up Career Center kids to come anytime they want to, I may have a classroom of 32 kids in one day. You know, I can't socially distance 32 kids. So I don't think that generally saying the Career Center can be opened up to all kids is correct. So I don't know if that's a Mr. Long question, or if that's a board decision, but it's hard to say all Career Center kids can come all four days. We have 16 business days before school starts. So, I mean, that's Monday through Friday. And it concerns me that we don't have Chromebooks for the kids. We don't, I mean, I know that you all have a plan, and I've read that plan. I was here at the last meeting. I mean, I've been here to multiple meetings. And I'm just concerned for my kids, concerned for myself. I mean, I have a two-hour training tomorrow. Two hours on a program that I have never used before in my life to try to teach my kids, or my students. I call my students my kids. So my students, you know, my class. I'm not an SOL subject. I'm aware of that. So, you know, some may say that my class is not as important as another class. I teach life skills. To me, that's just as important as some of the SOLs. So, you know, how are we going to go about that? How are we going to train on Canvas in two hours and prepare for the next school year? And my last thing is buses, bus aids. We can't find substitutes for us as teachers. I know some of the teachers in here are going, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to get a bus aid on the bus?" Or "How are we going to get an aid for our classroom?" You know, if we choose to teach from home, we can't get a sub to come in for us. I mean, there's been many days that many of us have gone in sick, just because we can't find a sub. So how are, how are you all, and how are we going to go about getting an aid for the classroom, an aid for the bus? Is that aid going to be responsible for checking the temperature? As far as coming, okay, so here's another question. As far as coming into, I'm like a squirrel. As far as coming into the school system, are we going to say, "Okay, so Mr. Hines rode a school bus today, so he has been checked at the bus stop for his temperature. But Ms. Ely drove, so we don't know, did she really drive today, or did she ride a bus? She's already been checked." So, and we all know that there are some parents that are not going to check their kid's temperature at home. We know that. So that's another question. You know, how are we going to know? I mean, we, I mean, really have to have extra staff on hand to, to check temperatures, to make sure that everybody has all the supplies. Kids don't even bring a pencil to class. You know, you have to provide a pencil to most kids every day. So, you know, for them to bring their Chromebook, you know, some of them are not charged, you know, Monday, Wednesday. I mean, what if they forget their Chromebook at home? What if they, I mean, there's just so many what ifs. And I know you all know that. But I just pray that it just, that it all goes away, to be honest with you. Because, I mean, as a, as a teacher, I'm scared. I mean, you know, I'm very hands-on. I mean, I'm, I'm a toucher, you know? And that's going to be really, really hard for me. So, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Crystal.
Appreciate it.
Okay, you can come on up.
I didn't have any further questions. Hello, I'm Nikki Grable. I have a child in the school system, and I am also a teacher. And I just have some questions and concerns as a parent and as a teacher. One is, I still didn't really get clarification from Dr. Austin about the Chromebooks. He said that we were going to supply them, but I didn't really hear the answer to, are they already ordered? If they are ordered, are they delivered? Or do we know what the delivery date's going to be? My second question is, I work at Flatwoods, and I know across the county that the setup for fourth grade has changed this school year. If we only have two teachers for fourth grade, and there are 25 kids in each class, how are you going to spread those kids out for social distancing? And then, I'm also like Crystal Ely. I did attend the training today on Canvas. It was a two-hour training, and we were told to play with it and learn, and that's it. And right now, we're waiting on our logins. And as a teacher, I, I'm very concerned about myself in being prepared to walk in and have a full week's plan of online classes, a full week's plan for in-class, and a full week's plan for packets, within such a short amount of time for school to be started. I don't care to go in and work and plan and do whatever, but right now, I feel like I'm just blind as to what I need to do. So the training part of being prepared for remote learning, I do not feel like I'm ready to be doing that in the classroom yet. And then, I think, that's all my questions. Oh, I was just wondering about school supplies. Like, is the county going to be able to buy those this year, or is that going to be up to the parents? And I know that we are doing the, everybody has to have their own school supplies. So I didn't know, like, if the county supplies scissors for everyone and Joe loses his scissors, what will we do? Because I can't say, "Oh, we'll just go get one out of the basket." So I'm concerned about school supplies, and I'm also concerned about cleaning supplies. I mean, even myself, like, I can't find Germitx anywhere. So if we need those things in the classroom, and, you know, are we going to be, have to get them as parents, or is the county going to be able to supply those things? Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to address the time issue a little bit.
Right. I will say this on the time call. The decision we have to make as a board kicks along down those, not just the start day of school, but the training and all that. I mean, they can't schedule none of the training until we figure out the start day. And that's pretty, pretty, pretty well known. As proposed, it would be the sixth, unless we change it tonight. But I understand the concern.
My name's Jessica Comer, and I'm speaking on the behalf of my sister back there. Students that do remote learning that has IUP, how will that be carried out? Special needs kids that is a visual learner, plus needs a lot of hand over hand, how would that work? Not only just special needs, but any child that is a visual learner. How would they receive PT, OT, and speech if they need that direct, you know, right there in front of them? How will we address a child that has been worked with for six years to look, speak, or give an act with others, to now being told, "No, you can't," and this child feels like he or she is being punished because they don't understand that this pandemic is even taking
Thank you, Jessica. We'll try to hit you some answers to that.
Dr. Austin touched on that.
Okay, Dr. Austin's going to talk to us.
I'm actually, I already asked that question to you, but if you won't touch on it, go ahead.
Okay. Can I go back to Ms. Ely?
That's fine.
Do I need the microphone again? I think I'm going to turn it around. So to answer questions, as far as same family, what we've looked at, and not definitive until after the board votes tonight, but what we started with is working backwards from high school. Looking at block schedule and what's the impact. Because, of course, the students that are in first block is not going to be the same number of students that are in second block. It's the same number of students, because we could have 10 students in first block, by second block, we could have 15. By third block, we could have, depending on the class, we could have six. You know, so depending on where those students go in the course of the day, and again, that's one of the reasons why we've suggested every other day for high school, is to make sure that those class sizes are not too big at any point. So we've been looking at alphabet, and of course, that would be defined by household. So students, even with different last names, we would start with the high school schedule. And then if it's every other day, then those students would be going, of course, if K7's going every day, then it's not that hard to align. If we end up with a hybrid system of Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday for K12, then of course, we would work from the high school schedule back through the family that has students in middle school or elementary, to make sure that that family puts all their children on the same bus, and we take them to the appropriate school during the day. So we would make sure that families don't have a varied schedule. And we just need, again, communication from families, as well as communication from schools. So again, our principals and staff have done an incredible job of polling to make sure that we've got a reasonable idea. But again, we need your help. We need your help with making sure that what we have is accurate. Career Tech capacity, the phrase that we have in there, that was a blanket statement, 30,000-foot view. The brass tacks of the statement says, "As long as you can social distance." So if a career and technical class has 30 students in it, then that's going to be in every other day schedule. And we would communicate that to families, to students, and that would be a teacher decision communicated with their principal. Because we have some classes that have 10 to 12 students in it, that we can allow them to come every day and to weld or cut boards or to work on computers. We can allow that. But classes like Ms. Ely's that are very popular, not that the others aren't, a lot of that plays into OSHA regs of how many students we can have in a class, but her class is extremely popular, and 30-plus students in a class, we can't accommodate that. Not in any room in any of our buildings, other than maybe this room, but of course, this would be very difficult to teach in unless you were a standing delivery teacher. Chromebooks, I'm sorry, I missed the delivery date. I wrote down Chromebooks on a previous. But the delivery date, when we knew that we were going to head this direction. Ms. Howard's here, she's heading up our technology department. She put us in the queue for orders back in April. April, late April, early May. So we are very ahead of the game on those dates. But needless to say, there's a nationwide run on Chromebooks at this point, but we are, we're anticipating having them in early August, but we are at the hands of suppliers. We have a Chromebook for every eighth through 12th grade student, and are working to fill in that gap of two through seven. So we've got a plan. They've been ordered. It's just a matter of getting a definitive date. And we do not have that, but I can assure you that that has been addressed. And to address a couple of questions from teachers, this is going to be something that all of Uh, this is gonna be something that all of us are gonna learn together. I, I mean, it's, using the technology, you know, as a teacher, it may well be, okay, U12, today, we're gonna pretend like we're remote learning. I'm not here, we're gonna pretend like I'm on a screen. And, and it's gonna take working through that together to figure out how we make this work. Because I would rather have that child know how to make mistakes on a Chromebook with a teacher sitting in the room before they get home and make that same mistake and can't get technology to work. And, and we may intentionally turn off, uh, access to Wi-Fi in certain parts of the building on certain days to say, hey, listen, what's gonna happen at home if your internet's not working? Well, here, let's show you. And then let's work through it together. So part of this is training, a- and part of this is just getting together with the students and figuring it out together. Because if, if anybody else's children, grandchildren are like mine, I go to them a lot of times, what have I done to this thing? Can you help me? You know, and they do a lot of times. Um, career and technical not being as important as others, I adamantly disagree with that. Uh, those are life skills that you use the rest of your life. And whether or not you can pass a 3rd grade SOL test matters, sort of. But at the end of the day, whether or not you can tie your shoes, or cook a meal, or, uh, be able to fix something, uh, i- is a very important skill. So, uh, you're not gonna find a bigger advocate, advocate for career and technical education than me. Um, let's see, we're in the 4th year of high school Chromebooks. Uh, this is the starting, the 4th year of that. So a lot of our teachers have already adapted to that. Now, I say a lot, for some of our teachers have said, ah, they're gonna go away, we're not gonna worry about this, and they don't ever use them. Well, welcome to, uh, 2020. So we gotta all figure this out together. School supplies, for the second straight year, uh, we have, have applied for, uh, Title I funding to pay for our school supplies. We are not providing school lists to your families, to you, uh, for you to pay those expenses, that's something that's picked up from division. We figure out what teachers need, and we provide it. Uh, if you need an extra set of, of scissors, and we're not providing those at the school level, please make sure I know that, and we'll take care of that, because that should've been done. We provide money to the schools, uh, for that purpose. So if you have a need as far as a school supply, we will take care of that.
And this is the 3rd year of that?
Is it the 3rd or 2nd? 3rd or 2nd?
I'll be 2nd.
At least 2.
It's at least 2? Uh, so anyhow, this, for this upcoming year, same thing. We're, we're taking care of school supplies. You shouldn't have to provide anything other than, uh, anything above and beyond. We will tell you what we're purchasing, uh, whether it's glue sticks, or scissors, or whatever we need in the classroom. We, we feel like administration, as well as the school board, that if we expect you to do something in our class, we should expect you to pay for it. It's free and appropriate public education, and that's what we try to provide. Uh, cleaning supplies, uh, each October, we have been sending, uh, numerous Lysol or equivalent sprays, I gotta quit away using brand names. Aerosol disinfectants, there we go. Uh, Aerosol disinfectants, as well as wipes, disinfectant wipes, and, uh, hand sanitizer, uh, to classrooms. We make that available to schools, we send it to schools as they request. And if you've got a need, we will do our best to make sure we've got it, even if we have to jump in the truck and go somewhere and get it, which we've done before. Oh, as far as IEPs, uh, I don't know if Ms. Mooney's in the room, she's standing in the back. Uh, we are gonna have to touch every individual education plan in the division. Uh, we're gonna have to have a lot of meetings with parents to find out, how does remote learning work for your child based on their needs? Remote learning was not gonna work for OTPT and speech. So there very well may be some students that come to our buildings 5 days a week because of their needs. Uh, so understand, that's not available to everybody, but based on the individualized education plan, we may do that for some students, as needed. Oh, and then pandemic effects, how do we explain this to children? There's guidance documents, there's all kinds of mental health supports, as well as our school counselors are gonna be getting some additional training. We have SAT counselors, as well as other resources that we plan to utilize. But this is not easy to explain to children. I mean, it's not. I, I mean, the thing that broke my heart at graduation is watching seniors, 17, 18, 19-year-olds going across stage, and you could see them take a step, literally, towards the principal, or towards a teacher. And you'd see our staff, hmm, yeah, she's just wait, you know, camera's right there, and there's, uh, other things, so let's do what the, the, is expected of us to make sure that we're all safe. So that, to me, was just almost heart-wrenching. So how do we explain that? We're just gonna have to work through it together in partnership. Uh, us in our role, you in your role as parents, and make sure that we're all on the same page. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being here tonight, because this is how we work through things like this, is together. We're not always gonna agree, but we gotta come together on behalf of children. All right, now I come off my sub box.
Okay, next person.
My name is Jill Skidmore, and I am a teacher here at Lee High. Um, first off, I do wanna say, I thank you guys for the work that you've put in, because none of this has been very easy. And you've come up with as good a plan as we could come up with. Um, there are just a couple of things, I, I do feel like we have some concerns. At the high school, I know we're still changing classes. So even though, as Mr., as Dr. Austin had said, there's 1,000 people at the high school, if you, even if you cut that in half, that's 500 people that we're going to have to figure out how to minimize contact with. And I'm assuming that in between classes, my responsibility is to clean so that the group that leaves doesn't infect the group that comes in. So we're working out schedules and things of that nature. Um, are we going to have extra cleaning times? Are we going to have ways? I, you know, and I don't have the answers, I'm not asking you guys to have the answers, but to think about the process and the protocols that are in place for this. Because once I have a group first block, I can't have that same group contact with the second block. And so in that meantime, am I cleaning things and disinfecting things the way that I would assume I need to? And how much time is that gonna take? While that's going on, what are the students doing? Are they wandering around? Are they going to the bathroom? Are they going to the snack machines? Because we know, and I'm sure you guys as educators know, they don't always just do what you want. I would love to have students who do what I say, every day, but they don't. And I just want to know if we've got some procedures and policies that we are working on for this, okay? And I do have a suggestion, because I've thought about it even with my classes. I'm going to have to make lessons for students, and I'm also gonna have to have tutorials for parents. Because they're not gonna know how to work this stuff. If there's a way that maybe overall on the Lee High website, we come up with ways to show how to log into things, how to use certain programs, I think that will help with a lot of the questions about online learning. Because I know, even as, as a parent, I'm gonna ask those questions. How does my kid log in? How did you get where they need to, need to be at? So maybe a, something that we can use at the, at the main website, say, okay, if we're using Canvas, parents, this is the tutorial, this is how we're working on it. And that might help with some of those questions, all right? And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Jill. Okay, I'm sure there's some more coming up to talk to us.
Is it possible that the high schoolers don't change classes while the other children?
Dr. Austin's shaking his head no.
My name's Susie Stanser. I used to be an idiot driving on Main Street. I see the pros and cons of this situation. You're gonna have a lot of these little head start kids coming in. And nine times out of 10, there's 20 to 25 kids in each class. And you've got the teacher, one aide, possibly two. Then I used to work with a one-on-one child. How are you gonna do that situation? How are they gonna do the kids that are in the classroom, and they raise their hands, and they need to go to the restroom? Are they gonna send someone with them? Are they gonna make them wash their hands? Or how are they gonna do this? You've got some of these kids that are, has to have one-on-one aide. You've got some kids I worked with an autistic child who are in kindergarten to the 3rd grade. And when he would have meltdowns, he would have to bring me from the classroom just to calm him down, and not take him to an extra classroom for him to calm down. How's that gonna work? You've got these teachers that are terrified, and I can understand, and I can feel for them. Are these teachers gonna change classes? If they're gonna change classes, why have it? Because it's like they said, it's so hard for them to get a substitute teacher here in Lee County. I don't know why. And if that teacher winds up sick, then that, those kids have come in contact in each classroom that she goes into. So if that get te- if the teacher has to be tested, and the students are tested, who pays for that? I've got a million questions, and I just can't think of them all right now. But I, it's just, there's just so many concerns. And I appreciate you all for doing what you're doing. I, I know you all are so confused over all of this. It just blows my mind about how all this is working, and how it's doing. It's just, it's just crazy. It's downright evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Susie.
I'm Lynda Colley, I am a teacher here in Lee County, and I also have a child that goes to Lee County Schools. I personally am just worried about the start date. I think, as a teacher, it's too soon. I haven't even been in my classroom to get it ready, or to figure out, okay, this kid, if this kid sits here, are they too close to this person? Are they too close to this? What materials can they share? What materials can they not share? I teach kindergarten, so if I have, kindergarten needs manipulatives every day. They need something in their hands every day, all the time. If every kid has their own manipulatives, I haven't even had the chance to go in and, um, separate that stuff out. Um, and that's gonna take a week. I mean, as many manipulatives as we use on a daily basis between math, and reading, and, and books, um, and word cards, and all of these things that, um, kindergartners need in their hands. Um, I'm just worried about the preparation of coming in in 3 weeks. And I am, I am the farthest from ready to be in that classroom. And I'm just worried about, like, the spike right now. Um, all of a sudden, we've had all these cases out of nowhere. Um, and I just think that postponing the start date of school would get us more prepared. It would get everybody's questions kinda answered. It would prepare us more of a plan to, okay, if this happens, then we can do this. If this happens, we can do this. And it would allow us to see where this spike is going. Is it gonna die down in a few weeks? Then if it does, great, and we get to go on, and we can move on. If it doesn't, okay, then we are prepared, more prepared with our manipulatives and the things that have to go on in the classroom. I don't, I don't know right now how my classroom, how my kids are gonna enter the door. And as a kindergarten teacher, I have to know those things right off the bat. I have to know that when they walk in first thing, first day, where they're gonna put their backpacks? How are they gonna keep their backpacks separate? I mean, all these things that we do on a daily basis, where they're gonna go to the bathroom, how they're gonna go to the bathroom, how I'm gonna clean between each person going to the bathroom, all by myself, being in a kindergarten room with 15 kindergartners that, of course, if you take their, your eyes off of them for 2 seconds, they're doing something else. Um, carpet time, where they're gonna sit at the carpet? Am I gonna take my carpet up? I mean, all of these questions, I need to be in my classroom to figure it out before I can have kids in there. And I just don't know if I'm ready for that in 3 weeks. Especially with, with, uh, the Jump Start program going on, which is a great thing, and I'm great, I'm glad that y'all are doing this. But I don't know if I can get in my classroom right now with all the other kids in there, and it to be safe for me to, for the kids. I don't wanna bring in anything on them, me working in my classroom, and, you know, give something to them, and have all these different, just these different scenarios that I just don't think that we're ready for yet. I, I'm all for getting back in the classroom, and I wanna see my kids, and I, I want to be in the classroom all the time, especially with kindergartners. But I just don't think we're ready yet, just postponing it just a few weeks, or maybe after Labor Day, or whatever, would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. We have plans, I think, just a little bit later to bring this up. Next person. Please come up, let us know how you feel. This is your time.
These kids that, um, are autistic and have the IEP, that in a normal classroom setting, that can't even, you know, sit still, and these parents are scared to send them to school, you know, wanna keep them home. How do you all expect them with the Chromebook to even sit down for 30 minutes to even do this, to get the work done that needs to be done? When they have to have a lot of redirections? Jessica Comer.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Hello, my name's Jacqueline Stewart. My question is in regards to athletics, and band, and all that. Um, I know that they're due to start band camp on the 20th of this month, which is next Monday. Is that still gonna happen? If football's getting moved around, is marching band also gonna get moved around?
I don't know.
Band camp is happening?
I guess what she's telling.
Okay, so if that happens, um, they're supposed to, I wrote in the plan, 10 foot apart during athletics. How are we gonna do band camp 10 foot apart? And how are we gonna wear face covers and play instruments? How are we gonna do this? I mean, that's not feasible, that's not. And I understand that in order for us to get funding for our band, to get the grants and things that we do, because it's not covered under regular things, such as, like, football, cheerleading, and all that, we have to do competitions. And we have to play swell on those competitions. And we have played well on those competitions, we have a great marching band. But how are we gonna attend competitions? I'm, I'm assuming that no parents would be allowed to, you know? It would only be the band and the judges in there during competitions. But how's this gonna affect our band program? Are we gonna lose funding? Are we not gonna be able to? I mean, because all the funding that we get is for grants and fundraising that we do, and that's it. It's all the concessions at the football games, which moving to football games is gonna cut in to our funding. And then, if there's no football, why do we have marching bands? You know, I mean, and my daughter loves band, my daughter absolutely loves it. She plays clarinet, she absolutely loves it. She's, since she was in 5th grade, and that's, you know, she wants to come to school, and she wants to be here for a band. However, I have 2 other children, 2 other daughters. One's, um, gonna be a freshman this year, and one's gonna be in 6th grade at the middle. Um, they're not so adamant about coming. I did homeschool them a couple of years ago. I, I will say that on the comments on homeschool and sports, they can play sports in homeschool, according to the Virginia State. They can play sports. However, my daughter was not allowed to participate in band, because band isn't actual class. But as far as extracurricular activities, softball, basketball, cheerleading, and all that, they are able to partake in those things. I'm not saying everybody go out and homeschool your kids. I think the remote learning, the virtual learning is a great option for our kids to still be in the school system. But also, if you don't wanna send your kids to school, please do the virtual learning and the remote learning, because it is, it is important for them to be with the Lee County school system. But, and they, they didn't have any trouble catching up. They were still right on track with everything. But, you know, just the, and then, you know, is, is middle school gonna go for 4 days? They're supposed to go 4 days. So then that brings me to my 2 oldest. So then that brings me to my two oldest ones are going to go two days. My middle schooler's going to be sitting at home. I'm not going if they don't have to go, you know. She's not going to go and do that when her sisters don't have to. So, you know, if they're going four days and they're going two days, then you're going to have conflict at home and you're going to have parents like going crazy. That was my only question was is band camp still happening? And if it is, I mean, are we going to be able to do our competitions? Are we going to be able to still make sure that we get our funding? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to try to tackle that. I got a son that likes to play football. And I've been asking, he's asked me a hundred times, do we have football season today? Do we have football season? And I'm on the school board and I tell him, son, I don't know. Guess what? It ain't our decision. That's the bad part of all this. If we can decide locally that we're going to be big break hearts and have a football season outside of being liable, have liability coverage and VHSL and all that above, but it's probably not going to happen. That's the sad part of the reality where we're at with this. Now, we're going to have it come February? That's what they're saying. VHSL drive sports in Indiana State, Virginia. There's three options and they're all just come out today. Today, we don't know all the details yet, but band camp, I couldn't dig it at this point. So it's go. So there you go. I'm happy for them. As far as being on the football field, it won't happen until possibly February is what we're here. That's where we're at with it and nothing can change it either. But if we could, I'd vote for it today.
I'm just going to say quickly on a hijack public comment, but some of the questions you all ask, questions, public questions, be patient for a few minutes and I think you'll get your answers. Okay? I've been wanting to interject, I thought I was going to talk, so.
Okay, I'm sure we got some more. Come on up and let us hear.
My name's Tim Schuber and I've got just a few short questions. Airborne ventilation. Is there anything, and there probably ain't nothing we can do about it? You know, this is an airborne disease of some sort, a cough disease. Ventilation system. Has anybody thought about maybe what we're going to be able to do, you know, to keep that from spreading from say one classroom to the next? And this is probably something that will come up, I'm sure, before the night's out. A nice little thing on Facebook, I guess, from around that there was a liability waiver that all parents will supposedly have to sign. Just want to, if there is, if there ain't, you know, I'm sure that's something, that was brought to me before I ever showed up here. It had just come on Facebook?
It's not true.
Okay. That way it squashes that whole rumor, because you know how Facebook is. The people that do not have internet access, are they, and I think you touched on that a little bit, about Wi-Fi access on the buses, at different points that they can come and download different things possibly? Are there going to be anything as such, you know, some parents may not have the ability to be able to drive their kids out to a certain spot or the kids may not go to that school bus stop? Are they going to be able to send packets or anything home to those kids once a week or something to that extent? You know, if that comes about. And I guess the biggest thing, which the last lady she touched on a little bit was K through seven. I've got two children in that age group right now and I can tell you, love them death, but I know how kids are at that age and they're probably, if it can be done, they're going to do it. Yeah, they'll guarantee you they... Johnny over here says, hey, I'm going wipe this on you. And next thing you know, you got another one. You got everyone of them. Send them four days a week. You're going to have a whole bunch of them. I mean, they're kids, you know, and that's what kids do. As they get older, they grow up at that stage. And, you know, we're going to send the older ones, you know, two days a week. You know, the others, we're going to send four days a week together and they're going literally be in the same classroom wiping every bodily fluid they got on each other. And I mean, that's just how kids are. You know, my kids can put them on two days a week or rotate it.
Let me clarify something. If you take drivers there or if you play sports, you do have to sign a waiver. It's not for attendance at school though. I think that's what that rumor was about.
And it may have been. It was just some sort of rumor saying that the school system wasn't going to be held liable if your child got coronavirus. And I mean, that was what was brought up. And I know how the rumor mill is. Before the night's out, it's going to be on every Facebook page in all Lee County and probably High Virginia.
True.
And, you know, that's something I figured I'd go ahead and just address it. That way you all can address, everybody else will do it and squash the rumor if it was or if it wasn't. And I think that's about all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Come on up. Uh, we've got one, Ken. New nature and pre gets through.
Hello, my name is Chasten Huff. I'm a sophomore here at Lee Hall. And I don't really have a concern, but it kind of is a concern. For some kids, I speak from experience. When you're on your own kind of trying to learn, like through virtually or just with one teacher or a teacher's through virtual classroom, and it's harder to learn that way for me personally. I'm sure that's other children, at least I hope it is. And I'm concerned that not being able to be around your fellow classmates will, because not bad mouthing our teachers, our teachers are phenomenal, ten out of ten, but at the same time, it's some things that they don't, they can't explain it as the same way as I learn. My classmates know how I think and they can help me better. If you're just by yourself trying to learn it off of the computer through virtual learning, then it becomes a more of a challenge for yourself because you're trying to learn stuff already that you don't know. And when you're with people, then maybe they'll get it faster and they can help you more along with it. And when you're with a teacher, then he can go at the speed of everybody and make sure that everybody understands certain points. But when you are by yourself or you're one-on-one in a class or with your computer, then it's harder to understand because you don't understand. And for example, say your parents don't understand either, then you're kind of left on an island by yourself. You can't learn that how they want you to learn it. And if you do learn it and you learn it wrong, it's a hard habit to break. Say you learn, for example, two plus two, you carry twos and whatever. And you learn it that way, but when you get back to school, back to phase four, I think, it'd be business as usual. Phase four, effectively. Then you get back to there and it's like, okay, this is how you do it. It's hard to break that cycle of how you've been doing it versus how you're supposed to be doing it. And it's harder, it's even harder to break that cycle when you can't communicate with your fellow classmates that got it or they were there in class trying to learn it and then they got it. But it's harder for you to... What I'm saying is it's easier to learn within a group of people more than it is for just to learn by yourself. That's us. I speak from experience. Because I think when you, when you're by yourself and you learn it the wrong way and you get into a habit and you learn everything the wrong way, it messes you up off the whole track. Say you're in science, you learn topic one wrong and then topic two says refer back to topic one and you mess up topic two because you messed up topic one and you mess up your whole class and say you go back phase four, topic 10. Then you got to relearn the first nine topics to start learning back to topic 10. And I think it'll be easier for kids to know how their friends learn and know their friends know how they think and then they can apply what they know, learn their work for them and they can tell their friends about it and then they can learn better in environments where they know everybody. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Chasten Huff.
Good evening. My name is Tim Barnador. Good to be here tonight. I want to applaud the board on everything that they've done. It seemed to be very unified and I applaud you all on that. The plan that was put forth, I think, was very detailed. Like I've said before, is there going to be errors? Absolutely. Are there things that we're going to have to work through together? Absolutely. As a pastor, we've not been able to have services as usual since March. And I'm a people person. I like to talk. People that are in here that know me know that. I like to shake hands. I like to hug my friends and my family. And this has changed all that and how we do things. But I do want to applaud the board and Dr. Austin and all the staff on everything that they've done. Sitting here tonight, I was not planning on speaking, but I'm a person that likes to set people up for success and not failure, my kids and our teachers. And something that's been voiced pretty equal across the board through every teacher is they're ready to get back in the classroom. They love these kids. They would not be in this profession if they did not love kids. If they are, get to a doctor because something's wrong. But I just don't think that they're being trained and they're ready for this new style learning. I heard Ms. Colley say a while ago, she said, I hadn't even been in my classroom yet to prepare for kindergarten. That's fixed home because I've got kids in that age group. And I want to make sure that our teachers, not only our students, but our teachers are set up for success this school year. And if it's postponing another week because we don't have the means or the technology or we need to give these teachers another week of training, then let's do that because our kids are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Brittany Harris. I have a student in high school and he's taking a full schedule of honors classes. What happens when he does remote learning or two days a week learning and doesn't get a good education and doesn't understand his class? He doesn't make good grades in his classes. So he took honors classes for nothing? I mean, he's a very smart student. He's A's and B's, but he has to be in a classroom. That teacher has to stay on him to concentrate. So what do you do? Does he have to retake the honors classes? Does he not get credit for those? I mean, we wasted our money as parents and his time as student taking honors classes to pay his education. Also, the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday thing, that's just for Lee Hall. So what if they have classes at VOTech? Let's say they have classes Tuesday, Thursday at VOTech, but they go Monday, Wednesday at Lee Hall. They go four days a week. What if they only have one class at VOTech? Do they go half a day? How are they going to get home? Because I don't think I'm home. I work. And another thing, when they do this remote learning, are they required to log in at a certain time? I mean, I work. I'm not going to be home to make sure he's on the computer at a certain time. So how is that going to work? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
So let me get your honors class can be taken on virtual learning? I thought so. I had honors classes, courses, we're going to be talking the same way virtually as they would in person.
But what you were saying, Brittany, is that your son needs in class with a teacher? Is that what you were implying?
In a sense, he does better in class than on his own.
I don't disagree.
He needs the extra push.
Okay, Dr. Austin, could you please address some of these questions?
Even though I'm providing answers, understand I don't have all the answers. I don't even know all the questions. So I appreciate you all having given us the opportunity to address these. And again, a lot of patience on your part. Those of you that had asked for a plan, and this is what I mean, but we've got some amazing people that we work with. So I say if you need a copy of the plan, see me afterwards. Well, without prompting, without anything, if you don't believe me, my phone's still sitting over there. Some individuals took the initiative and went and made copies and provided that to you. So our teachers do the same thing. Our staff does the same thing. They aim to serve and they aim to try to make sure that we get what we need and serve you the best we can. So that's just a perfect example. So going back to some questions from earlier, as far as transition from the in-person to remote and accessing Canvas and parent training, that's something that we will provide. That'll be provided through our PTOs, parent teacher organizations. We'll do that at the school level, invite parents to come in as similar to a back-to-school night, but come in and here's a device, here's how it works. And our teachers will work with our parents to make sure that those questions are addressed and we're making that as available as we possibly can. High school not changing classes, that was a question from here. One of the things that we looked at was possibly just keeping first block on Monday, second block on Tuesday, third block on Wednesday, fourth block on Thursday. So that a student's in class all day, same class, five hours in any one particular subject would be a lot for anybody. So that's why we suggested sticking with even the change in classes at the high school level to try to maintain some semblance of a regular schedule that if we do end up going beyond phase three, the students would be able to step right into that schedule, add back Tuesday, Thursday or Monday, Wednesday, whichever one they're doing remote learning, and we're back to somewhat business as usual. So that's why we suggested going ahead and having half the capacity at the high school level. I want to work through these. One-on-one assistance for students. If students have needs, then we will be able to do OTPT speech in person, one-on-one, whatever they need. We'll work through that IEP process. Ms. Mooney, am I accurate?
There's a little more, but you're accurate.
Well, I'm staying at the 30,000-foot view. Yes, there's details that apply to each student in those situations that'll be worked out by an IEP team. Understand, I'm talking about hundreds of students in one particular statement. So it's going to be individual needs met. Teachers changing classes, yes, there is a concern about that to a degree, but the thing about the teachers changing classes for especially middle school is that limits the exposure down to one person. Now, this is the science behind it. The data, the science, we make recommendations from administration to the board based on what we know or we think we know. And then their job is to try to make it appropriate for Lee County. Now, we try to do the same thing, but of course they take feedback like this, just like we do. So with the teacher changing classes, what current science says is if somebody spends six minutes, if I test positive, I said six minutes, bear with me. If you are within six feet of somebody who tests positive for a cumulative 15 minutes in the course of a day without a face covering, more than... without a face covering, more than likely, you're gonna be positive. It's a high-risk situation. I spend 15 minutes with you within six feet over the course of a day, likelihood of me testing positive, if you test positive, is very high. So what they do is they trace back, they, the health department traces back the last 48 hours of contacts that you had, to determine, who did you spend 15 minutes with within six feet without a face covering? More than likely, you're positive you need self-warthing. So will a teacher be in that situation with every student that they encounter during the day that they rotate through? More than likely, not. But will there be some of that? Yes. So that's where that plays in, and that's why we're recommending one person change classes as opposed to 15 to 20, or 12 to 15, changing in the hallways and all the transition. So that, we're just trying to limit exposure, as recommended. Who pays for testing at this point? It's being paid for by the state. Health department's been conducting testings at random, at various sites, even in Lee County, and they provide it free of charge. So as far as if there's testing related to, you know, a teacher tests positive, and we need to test a whole class, that would come back on the school board, on the division, on the cost of that. That's not your fault, but that's how it would fall. Band camp, we already addressed that. Career and technical, that was a question, I think, you had asked about, you know, if they take one class, if they're doing academics on Monday and Wednesday, they run their regular schedule all day. If they've got part of their regular schedule in those four blocks as a career and technical class, second period, second block, then they can attend that second block class on Tuesday and Thursday, even though they're coming all day on Monday and Wednesday. We would provide transportation to that one class and then back to the school. So that's how that would work.
So buses are gonna be running live all day?
Which they already do, yes, ma'am. I mean, we already run those from Thomas Walker to here for students. If you have a child that's interested in that, yes, ma'am, we may be running buses all day. If that's what a child needs and is interested in, yes, ma'am, we will work to accommodate.
Dr. Austin, back to therapy, P7, have we not already been doing some virtual therapy?
Yes.
I thought so. Somebody told me that.
In-person.
We've been doing virtual.
Okay. So that's speech, not OTPT, correct?
OTPT as well.
Right, okay. That's what I thought.
Ventilation was a question. One of the things that we do is, one of the few buildings that we've got air-conditioned is Lee High, this auditorium. We switched our units over from recycled air to fresh air. Most of our classrooms, you're aware, have a air conditioner in the window, so those units are of course self-contained. So we have been looking at ventilation on how we can control that the best we possibly can. Liability waiver, they already spoke to. We put that out for athletics, that you understood, if you're playing football, there's a risk for that. And we wanted to make sure that that was communicated. Now, the waiver's not worth the paper it's written on. It really is more of communication, that as a parent, you understand this is a high-risk endeavor that you are electing for your child to participate in. It's not protect us from liability as much as communicate your liability with letting your child participate in that. Same thing with behind-the-wheel drivers. Health department absolutely said not to begin with, but we worked through some details. And behind the wheel, if you're driving in a vehicle with somebody, you both are at high risk. So we worked through some details, and again, communicating with parents, here's our expectations, here's what needs to be done by our staff, here's what we need your student to do, and here's what we'll provide. So it's communication more than it is a waiver, mutual understanding. Access at home to packages, yes, we will expect teachers to do in their at-person, in-person instruction, that whatever packets they provide to their class, they have ready to send home also. We could send those home on buses. We had 10-day packets available, I think it was on March the 22nd. And some staff, some people actually took advantage of that. Some parents came and picked them up at the school and used those 10-day packets to get through March and to work with their children. So we will do the same thing in this scenario. Pre-K 7, the reason we recommend it every day, and again, this gets back to what professionals, health professionals recommend compared to what we need to do in Lee County. Reason administration presented Monday through Thursday for pre-K 7 is because pediatricians, American Association of Pediatrics says the best thing for a child is in-person instruction. That relationship, being able to work, especially for those young students as well as pre-teens, that individual interactions, not only with the teacher, but with each other, is crucial to their development. So that's why we've recommended that. And what they have said, point-blank, I can show you the data, is the risk is worth the reward. So that's from an administration standpoint. The risk is worth the reward, and administration recommends the school board, go with four days a week, and if a parent doesn't feel like the risk is worth the reward, fine, we'll do remote learning. If you wanna send your child Monday, Tuesday, but not send it Wednesday, Thursday, fine, we'll do remote learning on those other two days. Do what works for your family. We want to educate your child. We wanna be part of that process, but in order to do that, we have to consider every variable. And that's what administration's recommended to the board, and that's the reason why. It's not a disregard for, you know, to your point, the snot on the pants that teachers go home with, because we all end up with that if you've ever worked in elementary or middle. But it's the interaction that led to the snot on the pants that actually is gonna impact that child. So that's why we recommend it. But again, the board's gotta take feedback and make those determinations of what's best for us as a community. Honors classes, of course, dual enrollment, and even governor's school is done remotely currently. I mean, we have students at Lee High and Thomas Walker who participate in classes at Mountain Empire and in Abingdon at the governor's school that do that remotely now. So that's part of that piece of honors, but then honors also in our classes. We expect our teachers to have the rigor, the content of those honors classes available to students, and try to teach that remotely if that's what they choose, but if they can attend every day. I'm like a lot of the rest of you, that, you know, I wish we could just go back to normal. I wish we could go back to Monday through Friday, seven hours a day, and let's just have school. But that's not in the interest of public health at this point, you know? Maybe we get there, maybe we don't, you know, to be determined. The schedule of career tech, I think I addressed that, that, you know, if they, if you've got a child, especially the two-block students, the students that are there third and fourth or they're first and second, those half-day students, we definitely won't provide transportation for them, because that's a skill that they have pursued, whether they did a first-year class, and that's in a second or third year, absolutely. We willing to make that investment to provide that transportation. And then login, if a child logs in, what we've got in the current plan that we've proposed is if a child logs in at some point during school day, you know, for our part, really and truthfully, are we gonna hold their feet to the fire? It's gotta be between 8:30 and 2:00, as proposed. If a child logs in at 4:00 in the morning, are we gonna count them absent? No, if they logged in at 4:00 in the morning, they did work, I don't know why they're up, other than they're probably playing a game or something. But as long as they logged in and did something, fine, we'll count that as attendance. So, you know, are we gonna be flexible? Absolutely. You know, if they log in at 23:59, 11:59 PM, and wanna count that as attendance and get something done, that's a stretch, but yeah, probably. Yes, we will allow that, you know? So just be aware, we're being flexible, but we need your help as parents, as community members, making sure that we do our best effort. I think that's got 'em all.
Thank you.
Okay, more questions? Or comments?
Hi, my name's Beverly. I have two children in the school district. I have gotten a immense amount of anxiety listening to all of this, and I can only imagine the work that goes into it. But I have a couple questions, comments. You said that K through 7 is going four days a week, not five. What is that one day doing as far as the spreading within the health? The high school students are staggered, but the teachers are not. Once again, the teachers are coming in contact with all the students. So why stagger at all? Has anyone considered that all of this, which is going on, which does, I mean, it's overburdening the teachers, it's overburdening y'all, it's overburdening the parents, and seems to be putting the children at a massive disadvantage? I know, I had the brave student that came up and talked, he does better learning in a group, he wants to go to school every day. I have a child in the same situation. I have homeschooled two of my children for three years. I know the amount of work that goes in to school and children in different grades, and I just, I feel that the students are being put at a great disadvantage with all of this. You said for the K through 12, the risk is worth the reward. I don't understand why we can't implement more rules. I understand cleaning, things like that, why we can't apply that to all of the students in all of grades?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Leary. I have just something in brief, you know? I have a child that is, he's a, I don't wanna call him slow, but he's a lot tougher getting inside his head, you know, when he learns. Okay, as parents that choose not to see them at school and do the remote learning, is there gonna be like a one-on-one thing where, you know, if he has a question he doesn't understand, like a math question, a science question, where he can just raise his hand there and be like, hey, you know, I don't understand this, you know? And maybe he needs that extra time with the teacher, you know? Is he gonna be able to do that, you know? Because me, when I was a child, I needed that, you know? And when I was at school, you know, I had to, I raised my hand quite a bit, that way, you know, I could get the teacher's attention. That's how I learned, you know? Instead of, you know, a lot of students there, they can sit back, and they're like, oh, okay, I get this. But me, it took a lot longer, you know? And my child's like that, you know, to an extent, you know? Is there gonna be that extra attention just to this one child? And that's the only question I have.
Thank you.
So as I understand it, children that are taking classes remotely aren't gonna have the ability to ask questions of their teacher and contact them if they have a specific issue or area.
And like if it goes four days, and there's that one day, the teacher's gonna be responsible for answering questions? Is that correct?
After the school day also.
Okay, and after the school day also, there'll be time for questions for the teachers? Okay, anyone else?
My name's Ernestine Wright, and I want to thank you all for this meeting. I came feeling kind of scared and unsure, and I have a grandson. My kids are grown, but I have a grandson in the system. And we're just all facing the unknown. It's a fear of the unknown. And, but I'm leaving tonight with a positive feeling. You all have, at least in my mind, have assured me that you are trying your very best to do what's best for our students. And I feel a sense of positivity. You're assuring us that you're going to try everything that you can to work with parents and students and faculty and teachers. And I appreciate that, I really do. And Dr. Austin touched on something that I was going to suggest, and that's perhaps in-service training with parents about the technology. What kind of apps are they gonna be using, and how to help their child? And I think with a lot of us maybe haven't been as involved on a day-to-day basis with the education. And it's gonna be a joint effort. I think parents or grandparents, we have a lot of our students who live with grandparents. And we're gonna have to step up and take responsibility and accountability and work with the system and with the teachers, and not just throw it off and expect the schools and everybody, you know, to take care of it. It's gonna be a joint effort. And I feel that sense of cooperation with you all and flexibility. I think there's gonna have to be some flexibility all around, and I get the sense that you, that y'all are willing to do that. And I appreciate that, and I thank you so much for offering this opportunity for everybody to ask questions and air concerns.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm gonna ask a question that's not being thought about. Pinky Snappers, I teach at Thomas Walker High School. I'm just concerned about who we are going to let in the school, visitor-wise. We all have buzzing systems, but, you know, this is a small community, we know everybody. Are you gonna let 14 people come in to check out one kid? And we see that a lot.
I would open up, but I asked that question, by the way, and I think it checks for anybody coming in the building, from what I understand, same way we came in here.
Will that be something that's gonna be put out to the community?
Yeah.
You pick up a child, it should be just one person, just like when we go to the doctor's office now. You take one person in, that's it, so.
Right, I think so, yes. I will suggest it, for sure.
I also just wanna make a comment. We enrolled with school together, and I've taught 25, 26 new years now here. I miss my kids. I miss the people I work with. And I just want everybody to use common sense about this. If we can stop it, wear a mask, it's not gonna kill you for 15 minutes if you go in a store or something. I mean, it's real, 500,000 people died. So, and I'm a proud teacher, CTE teacher here, and I just wanna get back to school. And I know it's not gonna be anything normal for a while, but we can make it normal if we just use common sense, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to come down there again, or can you hear me?
I think I can hear you.
Okay. What's the next step? I mean, you do five, no, not twice on what we decide. So then, does that go before the governor? Does that go before the DOE? Is that final? What if someone says, that someone higher up says, okay, they don't approve your all's decision? Then what? Or is this the final decision, and this is what, we don't have to get it approved by anybody else?
My take, we're gonna discuss this plan when everybody gets done public comment. We have to report to the DOE 15 days. That's why we met on a Wednesday, and I go to church on Wednesdays like several others, I didn't wanna be here. But we'll do what we have to do. But we got 15 days to send this plan to them, they approve it, and then we're ready to go. But we gotta discuss this plan, decide on this date or another date, and go from there as a board. But once the board decides it, and we vote on it, if it's approved this date, this plan, that's when I'll move forward.
Will it take them 15 days to approve it?
We just gotta get it to them 15 days prior to the start of school date.
Okay. So after tonight, we can be assured that this is what's gonna go forward?
Absolutely, I think so. Go ahead.
Dr. Austin?
As far as that goes, the school board makes that decision, and we just have to provide notice to the Department of Education. It does not require further review. We have already had this vetted with our attorney, we've had it vetted with the local health department. And so, once we provide notice to the, once the school board decides what we're doing, we just have to provide notice to the State Board of Education. And that's it. Now, they may provide us some feedback, but it'll be administrative procedural stuff, not go back to the drawing board.
Just so, I mean, it just allows, you know, parents time to need to be a sitter for, you know, those two days, or that Friday, or someone to make other plans. It's just, I mean, it's a good time to try to make a plan for parents as well, so. Thank you.
I just want to know about childcare.
It's gonna be discussed.
Okay, let me go back. So the first thing is, four days a week, what we proposed is on Friday, whether it's Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday through Thursday, what we proposed is on Friday, that that be a remote learning day. Two reasons, first of all, that that gives our teachers a chance to plan, and also gives our students a chance to communicate with those teachers. And then also, that gives our building 72 hours to sit, because time is on our side where this virus is concerned. So we will clean, but time, the more time that sits between occupancy and vacancy and vice versa, the more time we put between those, the better off we are. So that's why we proposed having Fridays as a remote learning day. Teachers, the reason that we've got them every other day is, they're gonna be at a single point of contact, they're the source of information, and could they be the one that spreads the virus? Yes, just like any one of us can spread a virus. This is, you know, you take measurable, reasonable measures to prevent it, and we will do everything in our power to do that. One-on-one with the teacher, if a student has a question in class, yes, we're gonna set it up. Some teachers may choose to teach live, and some students may have access to that. Frankly, if we don't have the technology in place for some, we may be packaged for the first couple of weeks, depending on how technology works out for everybody. We may be paper and pencil, but we will work through the education process. But we will work through the education process until we can get to the actual technology use of this. Pick up, we are gonna limit, as proposed, the number of visitors. No visitors, no lunch with students during the day. We're gonna limit the number of people that come and go in our buildings for this reason, just trying to limit exposure for us as well as for individuals who come into the building. Next step, from here, from administration standpoint, once the school board makes a decision, of course, we've gotta build a calendar. We need to get out communications to not only our staff, but also the community of what this is gonna look like. There will be a survey that will be sent out to parents to say, do you plan to attend in person, or do you plan to attend remotely as it's approved by the school board? And then, once you make that decision, if you're in person, are you providing transportation, or are you gonna actually ride a bus? And if you're gonna ride a bus, how's that gonna work? So this will be a Power School survey. It will not be something that comes out through Google, so you'll actually have a login so we can link your student with the response. And then from there, we'll ask for those responses by next Tuesday. Yes, it's a quick turnaround, depending on the start date. But the reason that we need that is so that we can get buses scheduled, get drivers lined up, get everything set up to be able to have the first day of school. The reason that we have recommended sticking with the schedule that was approved back in December, as far as the calendar with an August 6 start date, is several reasons. Is because, first of all, it's already there, but the main reason is, if things continue as they are, at the state level or the national level, and the governor ends up pulling the plug on this again, and we end up in a Phase 2 or a Phase 1 at the end of August, then at least we will have had three or four weeks with our students. Now, is it gonna be a challenge? Yes. Is it gonna be something that would be beneficial for our students? In our opinion, yes. But again, that's why we make recommendations to a board who then, of course, tells us what to do. So, I think that's got everything.
What's the issue of post-pandemic later day? Especially if we're having an outbreak in southwest Virginia? I mean, I know it's putting the kids longer, further behind, but, that being said, it would give the teachers time to get educated, as well as get the parents prepared for the ones, for the remote learning as well.
Okay, anyone else?
All this remote learning, I'm telling you, Brooks, is great. But we do not have internet access all over the county. I think this group should talk to the board of supervisors or whoever to see if we cannot get more internet access. There may be people in here that got great internet access, but there are people in here that don't. And this remote learning is great. It'll work if you can have access. So call your board of supervisors person and say, hey, get on this. Don't let them pass the buck.
I spoke to Dicky Leonard last night, and he was a board supervisor, and he is asking us for some information to help him just do that. They wanna help us out.
Yeah, but they have to be brought along sometimes.
Yeah.
We plan to do that.
Well, the power of the vote does a lot of that.
Okay, any more people wanna come up and address this? It's been a great group so far. We appreciate all your input. Anyone else? Be brave, come on up here. Don't go home and say, I wish I'd got it there tied.
I just touched on what he said. I'm running a planetary grid rug. They can get point broadband right up front in a couple houses. I can see the house that has it. But all we are available to get is satellite internet, which I kept for two years and paid $80 a month for it, and it wouldn't even load most of the time. So right now, we don't have internet at home.
And that, you're gonna have to get on your board of supervisors about that. The school board can do that. And they're sitting there with.
I'm having a lecture, supposed to be trying to do something right now with Scotty Horni phone system or something, get internet everywhere, but how long is that gonna take? He told me to check back in six months.
Well, I heard in Stickleyville that some people were getting to sign up. Now, how long that's gonna take? Through Pave Valley Lecter, I don't know.
He told me he couldn't give me a date, he said, check back with me in six months.
Thank you, Lisa.
My name is Bill Cooper. I wanna first thank y'all for moving the time to 6:00 PM for all of us at work. At 2 o'clock's hard to make for anybody. I kinda feel, a lot of people I've talked to, they think you got a good plan, but that we should maybe wait till after Labor Day. I know you said that you feel like, you know, at least get two or three weeks. I mean, with school starting up, and you're not sure if you're gonna have the supplies, you know, what's two or three weeks gonna do? It's gonna do nothing. If you take and push it back a month, see if the outbreak's gonna be worse or if it's gonna get better, then I think those would benefit the kids more than getting three weeks. It's just, you know, my opinion and some of the other people I talked to. The plan y'all got, you know, is good. I don't think you're gonna make everybody happy. Everybody in here has a different opinion. But I think you got a good plan, and I think y'all are trying to be flexible, and that's good. But I do feel like, starting after Labor Day, be the best options. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Bill Cooper. Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Any more comments, questions? Don't be bashful. Let us know.
Can we guarantee that our kids can get the same education? And, I mean, how can they get the same in three days, two to three days, that they don't even get five? That's my concern.
I think that's part of the sacrifice of this whole COVID-19. I don't know. I wish I did. Any more comments? Because we're gonna try to vote on this if there are not any more comments. Again, I certainly appreciate you coming out and expression, expressing yourself, and everyone's done a great job. Okay, are we ready to go on with the agenda?
Yes.
Board comments?
I'll start. I'll try. I wanna thank everybody for coming out. I think it's been great. I've taken a lot of notes here, and I'm gonna try to address some of the issues. I think everybody acknowledges, these are just unusual times, most unusual times in my 53 years on this earth. And everything's different. I'm a lawyer, and court is different, filing papers is different, having access to officials within the legal system is just different. So we're all having to adapt, and we're all have, I went to court today, and for the first time, I had to wear a mask, and I was not happy about it. But it's something you have to do. And there's just a lot of sacrifice that's gonna have to be made. I want their children back in their schools. I want my daughter back in school, at Johnson Middle School. My wife and the faculty of Flatwoods, they're ready to start school tomorrow. They are ready to go. So, but here's what I think. I think this group probably has different ideals, and I think we realize this is maybe the most important vote we'll ever make, and that we need to be unified and expressing ourselves through this vote. And so I think there's probably gonna be a compromise that's gonna really answer a lot of the issues that people brought forth tonight, and it's gonna kind of be a hybrid opening. I think we'll probably start out slow and then reevaluate after a short bit, and then maybe try to get back to more days in school for every child. I think that's what's gonna happen, and I hope that's what's gonna happen. The virtual thing, and some people addressed it, it concerns me because there is such a division between those. I live in the town of Johnsons. I have great internet, I really do. And I have it at my office. My daughter goes to work, and she can learn from there, it doesn't matter. She can learn anywhere. But a lot of people, just in my district, down below Flatwoods and Blackwater, they don't even have the ability to have access. They don't even have cell phone service. So we've got to find a way, and working with the board supervisors, to get Wi-Fi out of these communities and these areas where people don't have that access. Otherwise, this'll be a disaster if things go bad and everybody ends up learning from home, or a great number of students end up doing virtual learning. I wanna say that, I wanna give a lot of praise to our administration, because just think about all the things we've talked about here tonight, and all the questions that have been asked, and think about all the little pieces you have to put together to make this thing successful. And there's a lot. And Dr. Austin hadn't even touched on most of them. There's a lot over out there that we've not even brought forward tonight. But man, I'm so proud of them, and just on their behalf, I hope this thing works. And I hope people give them the praise they deserve, because I hear a lot of complaining. And I hope people will thank them if we could get our students back in school and get them a good quality education, which is what we, by law, have to provide, or have to at least strive to do that. This is a, I said in the meeting on Thursday, this is such a fun time for this school board member, just have to sit up here tonight and vote on something that did, I mean, jeez, what could go wrong? No matter what day you start school, the very first day, you could have 10 staff members or 10 students end up positive, and then you're like, oh my goodness. But we don't control it, it controls us at this point. We have to do the best we can, we have to try to be smart about it. I heard somebody last night talking about it, and they said, this is not something to be, can't be a tough man, let's say that. Be smart, don't think you have all the answers, because when you think that, you'll find out wrong with this virus. But hopefully we'll have success, and we can reevaluate. But if we have success at the beginning, we can't get complacent, because it can change like that. And we're gonna have to stay on top of it. And I'm gonna ask each of you, whether you're an educator, or you're a parent, or a student, be smart, clean your hands, wear a mask, social distance, help others do that if you see people that aren't doing that. If you don't feel good, don't come to school. And let's try to get the word out in the community about all the different opportunities that the Lee County Public Schools are gonna offer, even in the worst and most difficult of times, because I'm pretty proud of them. And I really think that we're obviously not gonna be able to provide the same exact education as we planned on providing for 2021. But we're gonna provide a good one, a decent one, and we're gonna help some kids out, I think. And so I just appreciate you, and I'll be quiet now.
My name, I want to thank this crowd, it's just probably, this is my 25th year of being on the board, this is the best crowd of this side that I've seen and listened to, just to be honest with you. We've had some pretty tough conversations across the county about a lot of things. And I thought, honestly, I told a friend of mine on the phone, this is gonna be a show too soon. But I have to say, it's been amazing. I can't say any different. I know a lot of teachers is here, and different people. And I wanna thank you all for showing up, because you all are the ones that make the school system the best it can be, it ain't the board. If the board didn't make the plan, this plan is not put together by me, because you don't own my plan, trust me. It would be a lot different in some cases, and in some cases, it might be better, I don't know. But nobody has all the answers, of course. I wanna apologize to Pinky for having to go to high school with Rob Hines, I know that was probably tough. At the internet conversation, where me and my family live, we don't have internet, we have huge network, and it's not good, and it's not good though. And my wife has to work from home through Provo Superparole for the state, and it's hard for her to even send an email at times. So I know all too well about virtual learning, and the amount of work that's gonna have to take place before it to be successful in Lee County, it's gonna take a while. And like was said here by Mr. Brooks, call your board supervisor. That's who, ultimately, that's who gets utilities in this county for us. School system's got a pretty good service, you can pull a parking lot, we turn the live on, you can download on Chromebooks. Does it work all the time? No. I mean, it's just, it's in and out. We need the best we can get to offer our students, and right now, I don't think we're doing it. We gotta get on board with everybody, not just the board of supervisors, and I don't have to, Mr. P, Mr. Kielgore, whoever you wanna call, Mr. Northland. That's what it's gonna take to make things happen the way they are now, with remote learning. And it's gonna be tough, it's not gonna be easy at all. And I'll say this reverently, I do wanna thank the pastor for coming and speaking with us. He serves on the board for head start, he sits in a lot of committees, makes a lot of those decisions, and it takes people like that to guide a board and to say, this is what we need to do. These decisions are not easy. We're setting the record, trying to make a decision on to bring your kid back in the middle of the season, it's not easy. It's not easy to do my own, but my kids will be attending school there. They are more than ready to go back to school, because I put them to work at my house. Most teachers that I've talked to, almost all of them is dead set, ready to go back to work, and I appreciate that, because it's tough, it is tough. And I can't ask, you can't ask anymore of anybody to say, I'm willing, I'm ready, you're right. And it's not up to a politician or a board, if anybody lives or dies, it's up to the good Lord. And that's where I'll leave you there. We, as a board, have to take care of our students, and the only way to do that is get them in school. And I'll vote to do that tonight.
Maxie, would you like to speak?
Yes. I would like to thank you all also for coming and voicing your concerns. As a former teacher, I can relate to you educators, thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. And having two adult kids that are teachers, two grandchildren that are in the school system, just know that we are going to work hard together tonight in making the right decisions. Teachers, rest assured, we understand your fear, your concerns, but we're gonna make some good decisions tonight. And just trust and work with us, we're gonna make the kids needs in every way we can. And they come first. But we're gonna have it to where the teachers can work and do the job they need to do. And if there's anything that comes up that we need to know, feel free to contact us. We're here to work with you. And just know that God is my, I have faith in God, and He is on the throne, and He is gonna control and lead and guide us in what we decide to do tonight.
Mr. Williams, would you like to speak?
I'm gonna start everyone else, everyone else here. I thank all of y'all for coming out and voicing your opinion. Y'all made a whole lot of comments here, and I tried to write a lot of them down, a lot of great comments, you really did, got me thinking about a lot of things that I really hadn't thought about, honestly and truth. I think Mr. Austin, him and his staff, they've done a super great job, they really truly have. I've got no idea how much time they put in, effort they put in, for putting this plan together, which I feel is a good plan. Each and every one of us sitting here, us five sitting here, we've all had a little different idea of what we would like to see happen. Maybe the date, the time school starts, how it started, you know, how this is done, how that's done. I believe each and every one of us, from the bottom of our hearts, wants to do what's the best for our students and our teachers. And I believe we will accomplish that tonight, working together. I do thank you, the time that we've had together, I don't think here alone, but I feel that we've worked pretty good together. but I feel that we've worked pretty good together these past, past few months. And I thank y'all for that. But I, I just think that this, there's a lot of what ifs out there. A lot of what ifs. This is the first time we've ever seen anything like this. And I hope and pray to God above that we never see nothing like this again. But the only way that we can make it work is working together. You know, uh, like, like men said before, you know, we're not gonna please everybody. But I just ask each and every one, each and every parent, and even, even if you're just a concerned citizen, whatever we vote on here and, and agree on here tonight, give, give it a, give it a chance. Give it a chance to work and see if, if, if it will work. And if it won't work, then like Rob said, in thirty days, we'll come back and we'll look at it again. If it ain't working, then we'll, we'll go to something else, try something else. But, but, uh, we've never seen nothing like this. We don't, we don't know exactly what we need to do. Mr. Austin said that two or three times, you know. We, we just make sure of what, what we need to do one hundred percent. But let, let's, y'all just give it a chance. That's all I'm asking of you. Whatever we decide here tonight, just give it a chance to work. And all of us working together, voicing your opinion like you have, uh, uh, tell us that. Let us know what's going on in, in your, in your head, you know. My kid needs this. My kid needs that, you know. Let us know things like that. Like you talked about, you know, there's nothing like having one-on-one. And so I was one of the kids that, that, that needed that one-on-one thing in school, you know. The kid raised your hand, you know, the teacher coming back, our hands over your shoulder and helps you work the problem out. That's, that's great. We're not gonna have some of that this, this time around for a while. So, uh, but anyway, just, just, I'm, I'm just asking you folks, just, just give it a chance. Give it a chance to work and, and see, see if we have to put the best thing together at this possible time. Thank you.
There's not a whole lot I could say now except as a retired teacher, I certainly can reach out to all the educators. I appreciate Dr. Austin and the staff for working so hard. I appreciate all the board members. We're trying to work together to do absolutely the best thing. And right now, I don't think anyone knows what's best. But hopefully we can reevaluate, like Gary said, we can look back on this and see, do we need to change something? So I think we're gonna have a decision here in a little bit. Again, thank you for being here. You've been a great crowd. And anytime, please talk to us. Let us know what you want, what you need. We don't know if you don't talk to us. So thank you. Okay, under action, um, what do we need to do with that? We're gonna...
Mike, I'm gonna move that we amend that up.
Okay.
And...
Would you read that?
You need to say that you want to amend the plan.
Yeah, I wanna amend the plan.
Okay, so you made a motion to amend the plan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I wanna amend the plan to change the beginning of the school year and the way that the students attend school, the way that it's been proposed in the plan.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
But we need, we need to amend or make a motion to amend, I guess, to add the summer school thing. Do we wanna do that or not?
Okay, so...
Summer school's not part of the plan, though, right?
No.
So it's just, is it just on the plan?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you've made the motion to amend the plan to start school. Uh, Mike, you've seconded it.
Yes, ma'am.
And any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, no. Motion carries.
Yeah, so now I'm gonna move Lee County Public Schools open for the 2021 school year on August twentieth, 2020. Propose that operates again on staggered schedule. All employees at the discretion of administration and principals will report to their respective buildings on August tenth, 2020 for school preparation and training and safety in virtual learning. Uh, that's just plan to be reevaluated after Labor Day.
That's on August twentieth, start date, right?
Yes.
Yes, August twentieth is start date. And teachers will report back, report in August the tenth for training.
At the discretion of administration and principals.
All right.
Yes, everybody's saying.
Okay, that, that staggered schedule is for K through twelve, not just eight through twelve.
Are we saying Monday through Thursday?
So it's on the table now. You're saying Wednesday or Friday, which day to be off. Is that correct? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Obviously, it's gonna be our choice, but, uh, you got Monday, Monday, Tuesday. You could shut down for cleaning on Wednesday, bring them back Thursday, Friday. Or we could, vice versa, just be off Friday. So that's, that's what we're gonna pick through, right?
Definitely think, I'm thinking about Wednesday. Uh, some health professionals have suggested that one group of ten, Monday, Tuesday, clean on Wednesday, and Thursday, Friday have the next group. Other than that, I, you know, I don't know. It's just that...
Like a A group and a B group.
Y'all need to give me your input.
I have no problem either way. I'm like some of the people that ask. I've got, uh, a son and a daughter. Uh, I don't want my kid, my daughter going one day and my son going the next. If we can, are we gonna do this affirmatively? Look at the families that, that want, that's, that's my only concern.
Gary?
Well, I mean, with Monday through Thursday, Thursday would be better. I mean, wouldn't that be better?
Off on Wednesday instead of Friday, you're asking?
No, he's saying off on Friday instead of Wednesday.
Wouldn't that be, feel that could be better?
You could send me two hours there for the school to kind of be still.
And I'll speak to instructions. If you've got Monday, Tuesday group, it's almost a week before you say.
Yeah, that's true. It's, it's a long time between.
And that's one reason we call it Monday, Wednesday. So, again, that's just our recommendation.
Well, my idea on that was, uh, a health professional suggested A, B group and have the Wednesday off due to if a teacher were to have symptoms or get sick with the A group at school, then the A group will be the only group that need to be tested or, uh, whatever. Then B group, she wouldn't be around here. She wouldn't be around in B group yet. But Monday, Tuesday, maybe know by Wednesday that that person may be infected. Just on a safety standpoint as far as someone coming down with the virus. I personally don't know which would be best. And I'll certainly go with what the rest of you think.
Right. Um, I'm in agreement on whatever, but that's just a concern that was dropped to my attention.
So Gary, uh, what do you think? Monday through Thursday and be off Friday. What, what do you think?
Well, I mean, like I say, to, to, you know, to, for the safety of our kids, if you separate the group, you know, have a day between, to me, I mean, that, that, that's a, that's a good thing.
Good to Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I'm fine with that. This is stupid. I'm fine with it.
We'll make it work. We're gonna reevaluate, like I said.
I would like the language in that reevaluate after Labor Day on August.
This is a thirty-day trial. Yeah.
Right, well, that would be great because then we might wanna change it a different way, you know.
And I think the governor's gonna weigh in between now and then, to be honest with you. So you've made a motion. Do you have a second or need one?
I need a second.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, any discussion?
I just wanna say I think that this, uh, plan addresses the issue of, uh, you know, having different for K through seven and eight through twelve, having a different schedule. So now we're gonna have the same schedule. And, uh, I think it's something, plus there's some people that think, let's get back to school. You know, let's just, let's just go full bore. And I'm not opposed to that actually. But at least this gives teachers a couple of more weeks to get familiar with this Canvas or whatever program, to learn safety, uh, protocol, uh, things like that, virtual teaching and all that. And plus, it gives us a few more weeks to see what happens with our health situation in Lee County. So I think, I think this addresses a lot of things. And I, I, I really have this board made up to agree on that.
I agree with mine. And thankful that everybody's working together. Also wanna hand to the group that's here tonight, we, we've got a lot of kids that is behind. And one of the main concerns that we have as a board, and we've discussed it, we've gotta get these kids back in school, you know, second, third graders gotta learn how to read. And they've already lost two and a half months. I'm right here with some teachers agreeing. They've already lost a lot of precious time that, you know, my kid, they're in high school, they know how to read. They're working on sports and different things and career centers. But these little kids that don't have the support, you guys are here supporting your family and your kids. There's a lot of kids in this county that don't have that support. And that's the ones that, that's gonna suffer, I'm afraid, if we don't get around it.
I agree. That's what worries me is the students that don't have parent support. It's, uh, I saw it all the years when I was teaching and it's sadly, I think it's getting worse. Okay, read the vote. All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. I didn't say no. I'm just saying say no. Okay, so this motion carries. Sorry. Uh, all right, what else we got here in school here? Okay, school.
Can you tell me what that motion was? I think we're all open to it. Tell us what the plans is.
Okay, the plan, thanks. It's written out. I move that Lee County Public Schools open for the 2021 school year on August the twentieth, 2020. I propose that operates begin on a staggered schedule. All employees at the discretion of administration and principals will report to their respective buildings on August the tenth, 2020 for school preparation and training in safety and virtual learning. This plan is to be reevaluated after Labor Day. And then what we were just talking about is having like group A to go Monday, Tuesday, and having a group B to go Thursday, Friday, and have Wednesday for cleaning.
Is it remote learning on Wednesday?
No, it's a...
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. You never want to have an option of either any classroom learning or remote learning.
Wednesday is remote learning.
Yeah, and then Wednesday also, it probably will be remote learning where teachers can help with the students. Uh, they have to be available.
And also you're adding that reevaluate after Labor Day.
Yes, reevaluate after Labor Day. And hopefully things will start going down. And I would all love to see everyone get back to normal.
And, and I'd say if we get through this little spike, we can open schools up four days a week for everybody. That's what we'll do, I think. So we want, we wanna get there as soon as possible, but we wanna be smart about it.
Yes, we don't want them to lose lives. Yes.
Are you saying that the teachers, if they want to, can they come earlier than the tenth? Some of them feel a concern about not having enough time.
They can.
I mean, that, that's speaking from an ex-principal. I mean, if they wanna come earlier, we'll fire two of them if that's what you decide.
I think it's a big...
Yeah, I just want to fire the person. It sound like, you know, that they can't come till the tenth. But if they wanna come on the first, or the second, or third, whatever it is, they can come.
That's a reason for moving it up to the twentieth for school starts so the teachers can prepare them.
If they wanna come on the first Monday and August fourth on.
Yes.
They just need to get with the principal at each school.
Yes.
Make sure, you know, they did it all work out together, like you were saying. Yes, sir.
And of course, I can't imagine any principal not wanting a teacher to come in and work.
I have a question about the staggered schedule for the elementary school. Kids in elementary schools are the ones that need daycare or some to watch them. And if my kid is only going Monday, Tuesday, and I'm a teacher and I have to work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, my kid is more of, as a lot of other working parents are gonna go to a daycare. So what's the difference of them getting germs from daycare and bringing it back to school rather than just going Monday through Thursday when they can just stay with a class instead of bringing in germs from daycare and from school?
Again, I, I'm not sure this plan is gonna please everyone. We can't, we don't have the answers. It's gonna just have to, we're all in it together, trying to figure out what to do, what is best. And it is gonna be hard on parents, especially working parents. So I don't know. Is any...
But that, that's why we wanna try to get back to four days a week after we reevaluate because we understand the hardships it's causing for a lot of families. And we, we don't like that. So we wanna get back to normal as soon as possible.
Well, I'm just saying that A B schedule for like high school or middle school can kind of take care of themselves and don't have to have daycare as much as the elementary day. Who would, who would still be going to a daycare facility or a babysitter or even like in-home daycare where they're gonna be around other kids? And then if you have the A B schedule, then even the babysitters are not gonna have the same kids. And they're gonna get mixed germs too. Because they're not the same kids on A day to B day.
I, I understand what you're saying.
And then when they come back, they're carrying in not just the germs from home, which would be, if they were Monday to Thursday, they would be in the classroom with those germs and their germs at home. But if they're having to go Monday, Tuesday and not come back till the next Monday, Tuesday, they'd have to contact five hundred other kids and family members who try to pitch in and help watch them or anything like that. I didn't understand the A B schedule in high school. It's hard for the little kids.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We need to move on to item B.
I'm gonna move to table that because changing the date to start of school, so we're gonna have to go back and look at the calendar. We've gotta get in a hundred and eighty days, right?
Yes, sir.
So we'll just table that and do it in August.
Okay, just table it. We don't have that. Is that right?
Yeah, I moved the table.
Oh, okay, move the table. Second. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mike, seconds. Any, uh, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, action, item C. Action, if any, to request nine hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents of funding from the Lee County School Board of Supervisors as detailed herein from CARES allocation provided to Lee County to assist with expenses related to the response to the global pandemic.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, okay.
Summer school or startup school or whatever one you wanna call it. It's the last thing that, that I feel that we need to discuss.
Okay, Gary?
You're asking to amend the gen and put it on, right? Is that what you wanna do?
You wanna amend the gen?
Making a motion, you're making a motion to amend the gen that I had summer school on childcare.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To?
Okay. No, the top one. So I amend the gen.
Oh, okay.
Addie?
Okay, Gary, uh, wants to amend the minutes so that we can speak on summer school and the childcare. Do I hear a motion? Well, Gary, you make the motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm just talking this about, that's about the startups, do whatever that thing is, that two-week thing. That, uh, they just don't understand. It's so late in the year or so late before school starts and everything. They just don't see the really, the need of it, uh, the good that's gonna get out of it, considering what the, the, the cost is gonna cost us. And the amount of kids that signed up, I mean, I know there's a lot of kids signed up. Three hundred and some kids signed up, about thirty-two hundred. But like I said, just as close as it is to the time that the school... Uh, but like I said, just as close as it is to the time that the school's starting, and I, uh, they just think, uh, and, and no more than it's gonna be four days, you know, eight days total, they just don't see the good of it. The folks that talk to me, the, the teachers and the parents and the principals, that's talking to me.
Okay, so, so you want to speak then?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, please make a motion for the sake of, I'm gonna amend that, right? We, we need to vote on that, for...
Yeah.
Then, then move on to the discussion part, I guess, let's vote on it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And I will speak to it just a little bit, there's 355 kids in Lee County signed up for the Jump Start program, which is, I don't wanna say summer school, that's an old term that was used, but obviously, they're behind. Now, not all of them, my daughter's one of them that signed up for the, she's, she's not behind, I don't think. But she can advance from, from being in this program a little early. We do have kids, kids that, uh, can graduate on time if we take the heat and do what we need to do here. Thomas Walker's got 25 kids that signed up to do this. And, and is it right that the teachers volunteered for this? Or is that, am I wrong? The teachers that's involved in this Jump Start early program volunteered, just to say, hey, I wanna be a part of that, is that right?
Yes, sir.
We've got, we've got one boy plays football, good student, uh, working on a HAM scholarship. If he don't get this, uh, get called up, he won't get, he won't get to go to college. This bottom line is just the truth, I talked to the principals today. I've got another one that, uh, won't get to graduate on time, he don't get his grade up, will not be able to graduate this year. They're signing up, trying to get called up, and factoring out of the program. I can't speak for everybody, obviously, it's, uh, there's no easy answer on none of this, but I, I support doing this, even if one kid can, can, can benefit from it, I'm for it.
Can we do a test run, do this on a virtual basis?
I, I'm for helping these kids, that's mine, more so than I am, though it's not.
Did you, could you do a test run of virtual?
I'm sure. From what I've heard, it's a combination of both, like you said there. As far as the childcare piece of it, that needs to be discussed too. I, I don't have a problem offering childcare if we can do that, uh, if we can afford to do that, there's a lot to do. But the Jump Start program, it'd be hard for me to say I voted against you, but we're being able to graduate early, or get this scholarship, and advancing yourself, 'cause I can't do that, I gotta vote for it. Either way, virtual, in-person, we're here for them.
What do you say, you're like, we have a virtual, a test run, virtual? He was gonna do a test run or virtual learning anyway, if they were into this program, which is, don't have a lot. And we're not, we're not subjecting people to other people's school, we can get the school year started, you know what I'm saying? Not bringing any crowds around each other. While many teachers, those here, not, they don't think they're a part of the care yet, they need a few more weeks. That's my thinking on it. I don't wanna hurt these kids that need the extra classes, graduate, or get a scholarship, I don't wanna do that at all.
I, I, we, I don't, we all, I'm just trying to explain, we're all...
Sure, I'll say with it.
I think the concern is where teachers, where we have moved the date now, is gonna help. And the teachers are concerned trying to do the summer school, then jump right into...
Before we move the date?
Right, since we moved the date.
Was your concern?
Yes, that was their concern.
So are we, are we okay on that?
Can we do the virtual thing, you think we can do the virtual, are you thinking about the virtual thing?
You have the wrong one. Third in, these, these kids gotta get called up, whatever, whatever we gotta do, I, I say let them, let them get called up. If it's third graders saying, I'm, I'm failing, let them get called up. I, I, that's my stance on it. If, if you've got teachers, uh, volunteering, they get out there and get, uh, I don't see how we can, I know, just honestly. But that's just my take on it.
I certainly don't wanna hold any student back, uh, but, you know, the thing of just eight days, I'm wondering, but I, I would be all for maybe virtual, because this, uh, COVID is raring its ugly head again, and it could cause, uh, more issues, but if we could do it by way of virtual, I, I think it would be a better plan.
Let's do it.
By way of virtual?
Yes.
It's very well, oh, the virtual program or whatever for high school, it is virtual.
Right.
The whole version is virtual. I mean, there are we teachers, I'm present, we can have a teacher in the classroom, but it is virtual, so...
There's still, there's still teachers that are, and volunteers, and putting people out there, I mean, that's, that's what we're saying, but yeah, she said it's pretty much virtual. Elementary is not virtual, by the way. Elementary is not virtual. Right. And, and the students I speak to, perhaps Thomas Walker students, obviously, I know we've got some third graders, second graders, some others that's behind, their parents saying aye. My kid, the other, I agree. I ain't saying no, but I can. I'll make the motion, we have, uh, virtual...
Jump start.
Jump start program in Lee County.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I ask a question, are you saying remote learning only, no in-person instruction?
Well, how about the, uh, younger students, it's like...
That's why I'm asking, I mean, if you say remote learning, jump start total, then that's pre-K, it's way over, everybody say that.
I may wanna leave it as, as recommended. If, if, if high school's virtual anyways, it ain't changing.
But how about the K through, what, six or seven?
Seven.
Seven, how about that?
Did Gary say it's virtual, too?
We have 45 kids in that.
Teachers coming in for pre-K, 12 right now. We have in-person, and it's, of course, there's a remote option for parents if they wanna do that. But if you all decide to do remote, I'm, that's why I'm asking a question, and the discussion, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying.
Do you want all of it virtual, or just...
All of it.
All of it virtual? What do you think then?
How many did we have in papers, seven that signed up?
I drive elementary, there's 45, Elbourn, 43.
Gary, do you have a copy of that?
Right.
Blackwoods Elementary, 50.
Right.
Rose Hill? Okay, I know.
355 total.
Could I make a suggestion about the Jump Start?
Yes.
Uh, I teach at Rose Hill Elementary, we have 47, I believe, signed up. Right now, we have something to that number, uh, it's in the 40s, yeah, it's in the 40s. We have 10 to a classroom, we have enough teachers that are, are volunteering to teach that, that we could have five to a classroom. Is that an option to do?
Sounds great.
I mean, 10 kids is a lot of kids for, for K through 4, you know, classroom. I mean, if we could take those to five or, or eight, you know, uh, instead of 10, that would give them more space, if you're wanting to do...
Gary, what are you thinking?
You're making the motion, you should keep it up.
I made the motion, I will make the, and add to it, make the motion to pass the, that we keep the Jump Start program as recommended.
So that would be, so that would basically mean K through 7, uh, they would be in class, and then the older ones, it would be virtual?
Unless they choose to...
Go in.
Right, unless they choose to stay home. Give them options, it's like they're already in school.
Gary, how do you feel, or you?
I, I don't, I don't wanna deny no child, but, you know, if, if you say it's all about the kids.
Right.
And if, if Mr. Kidd will feel that, that the kids need, he, he knows these, these are folks' personal, uh, then I'll back him.
I appreciate it, is that a second?
Is that a second? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.